Okay. Councilmember Halliburton?
Present.
Councilmember Fung?
Here.
Councilmember Papin?
Present.
Vice Mayor Aliva?
Here.
Mayor Snyder?
Present.
All councilmembers are present.
Thank you, and tonight we have joining us is the Milbury Boy Scout Troop 355. And if we could please have Nicholas Wu, Luke Farsier, Tyler Murray Atkins, James Bourdais, Neil Sen Ranjani, and Kayden Carter, if we could all please stand for the pledge. And Troop 355, ready when you are. And I think.
Well, audience, please rise. Scouts attention. Scout salute. Please join me in the pledge allegiance, the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Excellent, thank you. Thank you, Troop Master Chang.
Thank you again for inviting us.
Okay. Ceremonial presentations, city clerk, if you could please pull up AARP. Thank you. The City of Milbury has a commendation for the AARP Foundation Tax Aid. Tax Aid provides in-person and virtual tax assistance with a special focus on taxpayers who are over fifty years of age or have low to moderate incomes. And whereas AARP Foundation Tax Aid volunteers are trained and IRS certified every year. And whereas AARP Foundation Tax Aid assisted City of Milbury staff in offering COVID-friendly in-person tax aid appointments to low-income residents and seniors in Milbury when the pandemic forced other cities to cease. And whereas AARP Foundation Tax Aid helped to serve three hundred and seven clients over nine weeks from as far away as Benicia to the east and San Jose to the south. And whereas AARP Foundation Tax Aid assisted these clients in claiming over three hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars in federal and state refunds with an average of one thousand and eighty-four dollars. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Milbury City Council, do hereby congratulate and commend the AARP Foundation Tax Aid for their outstanding contributions to the City of Milbury and communities alike. And I believe we have the district coordinator Jim Cole and at least a couple of our own local volunteers, Kathy Daines, Dawn Daines, and Jean Wong, to accept this. And Mr. Cole, I don't know if you have any comments?
I would like, I'd like to thank the staff at Milbury for their exceeding expectations on helping us do this. We actually handled more returns this year than we did in two thousand and nineteen, which was our last full year of doing returns. So, and that's all with the help of the Milbury staff. They were just excellent. And I'd like to thank the Milbury admin too for all the work they've done and allowing us to be in their facilities. It was a difficult year, and I appreciate everything you've done for us.
Well, I'm sure we thank you for everything you and all of your volunteers in the program do. Any comments from council? Okay, I don't see any hands raised. Again, thank you, and thank you for helping Milbury be one of those places that actually found a way through COVID to make it happen. I know we did, we handled people from so far away because of the unique situation. So congratulations to all of you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City clerk, if you could pull up the David and Debbie Van Ward commendation. And this commendation, I want to thank Rotarian President Joe Teresi and Lion President Wayne Lee for asking that this be put on the agenda. For tonight, we are losing a couple who have been in Milbury for decades and have been involved in Milbury's life for decades in many leadership roles. So. Whereas Dave and Debbie Van Ward have long, have been longstanding residents of Milbury as well as dedicated, hard-working community volunteers who give their time and energy generously. And whereas Debbie Van Ward has been an engaged board member of the Milbury Community Foundation since two thousand and eleven and greatly contributed to the success of renowned events, including the annual Holiday Star fundraisers, the holiday tree lighting, donor recognition luncheons, and the benefit concert. And whereas Debbie Van Ward has served the City of Milbury for four years as a member of the Culture Arts Advisory Committee. She was also selected as the two thousand and seventeen woman of, Milbury Woman of the Year in recognition of her many years of service as a community and school volunteer. Debbie Van Ward joined the Rotary Club of Milbury in two thousand and twenty after her retirement from United Airlines. And whereas Dave Van Ward has served as a leader and with the Boy Scouts of America for the past seventeen years, including Wee-Below Leader, Wee-Below Den Leader, and Scout Master in Milbury. Dave Van Ward mentored Eagle Scouts and taught merit badge classes at three council-wide events. In two thousand and nineteen, Dave Van Ward received the Boy Scouts of America Silver Beaver Award and the highest award a local council can bestow upon a volunteer. And whereas Dave Van Ward has been an active member of the Milbury Lions for more than eight years, holding numerous positions, including board member, president, vice president, and parliamentarian. In two thousand and fifteen, he co-chaired the Inspiring Movers and Shakers of Milbury event to benefit the Milbury schools ecosystem. Dave Van Ward communicate, commissioned the Milbury Lions Youth Baseball and volunteered for many Taylor Middle School and Mills High School events. And I'm going to put one more whereas in there. For all of us, thank you to Mr. and Mrs. Claus, who were virtually represented by Dave and Debbie Van Ward at many Christmas and winter holiday events. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Milbury City Council, do hereby congratulate and commend Dave and Debbie Van Ward for their lifetime of service to the community of Milbury and wish them happiness, good health, and prosperity as you move on to the next phase of your lives in a new community. And I see we have Gina Papin, Councilwoman Papin, please go ahead.
Yes, Dave and Debbie, I wish you all the very best, and I really hope that you will thank your friends, Santa and Mrs. Claus for us. Appreciate your bringing them to our, our City of Milbury every year. So nice that you have such close relationships with them, so thank you so much.
Gina, can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes, please, Dave, Debbie, go ahead.
We, you know, Santa and Mrs. Claus still want to participate in Milbury's events during the holidays. So if you will have them back, we will let them know.
Oh, please do, please. I'm so glad you're connected with that relationship still. We thank you so much.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
So we're really flattered by this, so thank you. You know, we don't do it for anything, but you know, we just love to give, so it's great. So thank you all for, you know, Joe and Wayne for putting in the extra effort for this. So thank you so much, forever indebted to Milbury.
We love Milbury. We love you guys, and we don't want to leave, but we're going to. Because of some necessities, but you know what? We are going to be back, we will still participate, and we just are so honored by this. Commendation. I do agree.
Well deserved. I see a member of the public, I don't know if this is Dan or Dan and Kathy Quigg.
It's me.
Kathy.
Anyway. Debbie has been a real hard worker for the Milbury Community Foundation, and I don't know how to thank her so much. And we will miss you and we'll miss Dave too. But I think this is a great little award for you this evening, and I'm really excited. I know you've had a very busy day. I've been in touch with you for the last couple of days, and I know how busy, busy, busy you are. So I wanted to be here to thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. And Dan.
Yeah, he's here too, but he let me do the talking.
We will, we will get you your commendation either before, I know you're packing up right now, but you know, we'll be in touch. And the guest bedroom here is always ready for you, your family, the animals, whomever you want to bring along. My cats enjoyed their time. If you remember, the cat really enjoyed the time with Santa. So thank you so much for your decades, decades and decades of service to Milbury. We will miss you.
It was certainly, honestly, it was a true pleasure to be a part of this community. We love you guys.
Take care and good luck.
Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Okay, Elaine, if we could do the commendation for Jeffrey Gabriel.
Oh, oh.
Oh, go ahead. Okay. Moving on to our third commendation. Whereas Jeffrey Gabriel was recognized by AARP for his outstanding performance during the two thousand and twenty tax season. And whereas Jeffrey has served with distinction as an employee with the Recreation Department at the City of Milbury for over six years. And whereas Jeffrey is an exemplary employee who goes above and beyond to complete numerous tasks in a proactive and thorough manner. And whereas Jeffrey planned a COVID-friendly way to offer tax appointments to assist low-income residents and seniors when the pandemic forced the operations to cease. And whereas Jeffrey helped to serve three hundred and seven clients over nine weeks as far away as Benicia to the east and San Jose to the south. And whereas Jeffrey assisted these clients in claiming over three hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars in federal and state refunds with an average of a hundred, one thousand and eighty-four dollars. And whereas Jeffrey is a critical member of the Recreation Department who steps up and assists where help is needed to get the project or task completed, no matter the obstacle. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Milbury City Council, do hereby congratulate and commend Jeffrey Gabriel for his outstanding performance with the City of Milbury. And Jeffrey, would you like to say anything?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to AARP for their trust. I thank you, Vice Mayor, City Council, especially to all the Milbury staff. They helped out a lot, you know, I was, I was in front, but a lot of people were helping me out in the process. So thank you all. This means a lot.
Vice Mayor Aliva?
Yeah, I just want to just give a little shout out to Jeffrey because he's the, the staff for the Senior Advisory Committee. And his laid-back attitude and he takes no, no kudos to what he's doing here, but I want to tell you that his smile is infectious. And what he's done for the seniors during this COVID time and making COVID and the meetings so alive. I, I'm, I'm very, very proud of you, Jeffrey, and I love working with you. So thank you for being in Milbury, and I'm glad they acknowledged you tonight. And I know every senior that's watching the meeting tonight on the advisory committee is clapping out loud.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Vice Mayor. I would, Jeffrey is also the liaison to the Milbury Culture Arts Committee. And in the last couple of years, we, he, along with Debbie and the other Culture Arts Advisory Members, managed to take our in-person art show and twice turn it into a virtual art show, which is really fantastic with a shout out to MCTV. Jeffrey also came over to help when we did the Halloween food or Halloween candy giveaway in October and even brought his daughter. So make sure your daughter knows that she's part of our thanks too on this. Jeffrey, you're just an all-around fantastic employee, and we're grateful to have you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. And Elaine, if we could move to Mr. Roland Tienko. And I can't read that small, thank you. Whereas Roland Tienko was recognized by AARP for his outstanding performance during the two thousand and two tax season. And whereas Roland has served as an employee with the Recreation Department in the City of Milbury for over a year and was recently promoted to Recreation Coordinator. And whereas Roland assisted in offering COVID-friendly tax appointments to low-income residents and seniors when the pandemic forced operations to cease. Whereas Roland helped serve three hundred and seven clients over nine weeks and from as far away as Benicia and San Jose. Whereas Roland assisted these climate, clients in claiming over three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Whereas Roland is a critical member of the Recreation Department who steps up and assists where help is needed to get the project or task completed, no matter the obstacle. Now, therefore, we, the members of Milbury City Council, do hereby congratulate and commend Roland Tienko for his outstanding performance with the City of Milbury. Roland, I'm looking for you. Roland, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, everybody. This is great, it's amazing hearing those numbers of people serve. Once again, thank you, Jeff and AARP, who played a huge part in just putting it together. And I'm just glad I was able to be a part of it and lend a helping hand. So thank you all.
And thank you. I used to see you standing out in the parking lot in the cold, helping people get up there and get ready. Not everybody must realize how hard our recreation employees work in all weather. So thank you very much from all of us with City Council. And welcome and congratulations on your first year anniversary.
Thank you.
Hey, Mayor, real quick, because I'm the part of the host, I don't have a hand raised, but I would just like to recognize our two employees for their outstanding work, both Jeff and Roland. And as you noted, they were out there every Wednesday morning at six thirty. And I would like to note that Milbury, we are a small city, but we're a city that can do. Every other city chose not to participate in this program except for us. And we decided to continue it because it's a great service to our seniors that need this. And as noted in these, in these commendations, people from all over the Bay Area came to Milbury for this service. Once we started it, other cities started to do it as well. But my hat is off to AARP, our employees, our Recreation Department, everybody involved, for the leadership and the great work and, and, and doing this for the seniors and showing that things can be done during COVID the right way. So thank you, gentlemen, and everyone involved, much appreciated.
Thank you. All right, moving along, city manager, agenda overview and staff briefing?
Yes, thank you to you, Mayor, and good evening again to the City Council, Tom Williams, City Manager. We have openings for our Planning Commission as well as, as well as other committee and commission positions. The difference of the Planning Commission is candidates must be a, a citizen and registered voter of the City of Milbury. Applications are due June, are due June second. Information can be obtained at Milbury on our city website, milbury.com. But if, if there are residents and registered voters that want to make a difference, help guide the future, build out of the city, the design of the city, the land use of the city, we encourage those people to apply for open and vacant planning commission positions. Also, other commissions and committees that are, we have open seats for. Again, the deadline for applications is June second. Information is on our website. That is the cultural or the Community Enhancement Advisory Committee, Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, Economic Vitality Advisory Committee, Senior Advisory Committee, Sister Cities Commission, and Youth Advisory Committee. And again, you can also contact our esteemed city clerk Elaine Tran if you have any questions. Her telephone number is area code six five zero two five nine two four one four. Or you can email her at etran@ci.milbury.ca.us. And speaking of our Youth Advisory Commission, they've been having a, a, a drive called Baby Needs Drive. And so through our Youth Advisory Commission or Committee and Samaritan House, they've hosted the Baby Needs Drive to help support parents in need. So they've been collecting unused baby bottles, baby formula, baby food, diapers and wipes for newborns to up to size six. So that drive ends tomorrow. So please, if you can donate any needs for infants and babies, please drop those off at the Milbury Recreation Center all day tomorrow, six twenty-three Magnolia Avenue. And so tomorrow is the last day of the drive. So we would appreciate anybody that could help and, and donate to this, to this drive. Also, our Milbury Beautification Awards are taking place. So if you or you know somebody, one of your neighbors that have beautified their home or business, we encouraging them to participate in the Beautification Awards by submitting pictures or videos of their projects to the Milbury Community Enhancement Advisory Committee. That email is milbryceac@gmail.com. Again, milbryceac@gmail.com. And the deadline is this Friday, May twenty-eighth at eleven fifty-nine PM. So one minute before midnight. Also, there's been, I think everyone knows there's been a lot of discussions about as we're transitioning out of COVID nineteen. The governor is lifting most of his restrictions on June fifteenth. We are going to continue to monitor state and county guidance regarding the lifting of social distancing and indoor capacity limits. And so with that, I will be, as a heads up, be placing something on the agenda on June eighth for our reopening plan to discuss that with the council and the community. So moving on now to the overview of the agenda. On the agenda, we have our usual housekeeping items, calendar of events, reports of bills and claims, reporting out of closed session, May eleventh, and this evening. We have our approval of meeting minutes for three meetings, February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, March ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, and March twenty-third of two thousand and twenty-one. Under Agenda Item Four, we have no reports from any committee or commission chairs this evening. Then we move into public communication. Public communication is any, is an opportunity for anyone to address the City Council on any item not on the agenda. And the time to address the City Council is limited to three minutes. Then we move to the consent calendar. We have several items on consent this evening. Item number five is to receive a monthly general fund financial report for the period ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. This is our monthly communication to the council on the budget. Item number six is to consider a resolution awarding a contract to Sinagro WWT for the hauling disposal and reuse of our wastewater biosolids. Item number seven is to consider approval of a street closure and fee waiver for the Milbury Lions Club Milbury Machine Car Show Event to be held on August twenty-first. Item number eight is to consider a fee waiver approval for the Rotary Club and their annual kids carnival scheduled for October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one at Rotary Park. Item number nine is to consider a approval of a partial fee waiver with the San Mateo County for the use of our community center and great room for the special election on the proposed governor's recall. As we understand it from the county, that is scheduled for sometime in November, although it's not a date certain. And since it's a special election, they, they reached out to us, we worked with them on the fees, which we are recommending to, to participate to the City Council this evening. And item ten, the last item on consent, is to consider approval of a street closure and fee waiver for the Fiddler's Green thirtieth anniversary and Strides for Life colon cancer fundraising event scheduled for September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Then we move into public hearing. We have one item on the public hearing calendar this evening, and that is to consider adoption of the two thousand and twenty Urban Water Management Plan and Water Shortage Contingency Plan. Then we move to existing business. Item number twelve on, under existing business is to consider a resolution authorizing the filing of a planning grant with the State Water Resources Control Board for the Recycle Water Project and authorizing City Manager, Manager to execute all funding agreements and approving a contract amendment with West Yost in the amount of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Item number thirteen under existing business is the Milbury Recreation Center Design, Build, Construction, and Fundraising Update. This is our monthly report to the City Council and the community. Under new business, we have no items. Then we move into council comments and then adjourn for the evening. So that concludes the agenda overview, Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager. Moving on to the agenda then on item two C, a report from closed session?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. Your Milbury City Council met in closed session on May eleventh. It was a special meeting, closed session called right before their regular meeting. The matter of discussion was to meet with labor negotiation, labor negotiators who gave reports to the council and council gave appropriate direction. It doesn't say on the agenda tonight that I should report on the special closed session meeting that the council just had, but I will do so to get that out of the way. The council just met in closed session before this regular meeting to discuss a matter of potential litigation. No action was taken today and no action was taken on May eleventh in the labor negotiation closed session. That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Casman. Okay, approval of minutes. City clerk, did you receive any changes from council members?
I did not.
Very good. If there's no council members, oh, Councilwoman Papin?
I just wanted to pull item nine for comment.
Okay. Thank you. If I could have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, March ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, and March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one?
Papin, move approval.
Thank you. Was that Mr. Fung?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman. All right, Elaine, any discussion? City clerk, could you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Halliburton?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Councilmember Papin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Aliva?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The regular meeting minutes of February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, March ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, and March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one are approved by the vote of five to zero.
Thank you, City Clerk. Agenda item number four, there are no reports from any committees or commissions tonight. So moving on to public communication. And as the city manager said, this is the time for members of the public to speak on items that are not on the agenda tonight. If you check the agenda and you want to speak on water rates, we're going to get to you. So.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, City Clerk.
Are you, are you asking for the public communication right now? I'm sorry, right?
Yes, public communication for items not on the agenda. So I think just before my screen changed, I saw former Mayor Wayne Lee. Go ahead, Wayne.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, Wayne Lee. I just want to, I understand that the city is contemplating hosting the Art and Wine Festival after the Chamber of Commerce canceled the event for this year. I would encourage the council to host the Art and Wine Festival this year and use the proceeds for the community center. I'm sure that the service clubs would want to participate in helping to raise money for the community center and will participate in the Art and Wine Festival. It's been two years, we don't want, it's, it's going to be two years without our traditionally, traditional Art and Wine Festival. It's just the largest festival in the Bay Area, and many people really look forward to it every year. I said, I would also suggest that you appoint council members, Aliva and Papin to the, they were on the Downtown Improvement Task Force, and they could pick up where, where we left off on this subcommittee. And hopefully next year, the chamber can do it again after, after they've reorganized. Also, I wanted to point out that you see my sign, Asians are visible. This is a campaign to say that Asians are not the mild minority. They should be, they should be respected for what they've contributed to the community. Mind Asians that they are visible, the right people that Asians are around, and they do contribute. And also to get away from the negative wording, so like, stop Asian hate, stop Asians, hate Asians, anti-Asians, would remind people how some people feel about Asians. We want to be in a positive light, so I encourage you to use positive wording, unite with Asians, support Asians, Asians are visible. Thank you for your time, City Council, thank you for all your service.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. I believe next up is Michael Kelly.
Good evening, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council and Milbury residents. Really appreciated the opportunity last session to talk about housing. It was a very long meeting. I think it's the first time I've stayed on for four plus hours. I have a much better appreciation of what council goes through. Hats off to everyone there, you do great work. I had tried to ask the question, but I didn't realize I had to kind of ask them all, like, there wouldn't be a back and forth. When we found out that there is going to be a lottery component for the low and very low income housing for what people, what families are going to qualify it, the other piece I wanted to bring forward is like, how are we going to ensure some racial equity here? It's one thing to have more people that aren't as well off financially come into Milbury, the teachers, the other, you know, people we need to have our community. you know, people we need to have our community thrive. But it's really important that we address the racial component of it. We have, I believe, from the last census, 3% blacks living in Millbrae. There's a very low representation of Indigenous Americans. There's, you know, if I understand correctly, something in the mid 40s around whites, mid 40s around Asians. To me, it seems really important, both myself personally and representing ARC, the Millbrae Anti-Racist Coalition, that we figure out how to make some adjustments here and bring more diversity to Millbrae. That's one really important item. The other one that I think you'll hear from other members tonight, I don't want to steal any thunder, but the blessing in disguise, the silver lining, if you will, of what's happened with the pandemic is how much participation we're getting at city council meetings by being able to come in remotely and having these Zoom sessions. I know many members have been able to participate that otherwise cannot make it in person to City Hall or the various rooms where typically the these, these meetings are held. And so I'm hopeful and I'm hoping, I'm requesting that city council would consider keeping an online component. So once the rooms open up and we get back to more of an open California and an open Millbrae, that there's still a way for the whole city to participate. If they can't be there in person, to come in in a Zoom kind of environment. So that's a big ask. But I hope, again, we can make the most of this pandemic situation, what we learned of how to, you know, get more participation by leveraging the technology that we've used this last 16 months or so. Thank you so very much. And again, my sincere appreciation to all of city council and city management.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mr. Nathan Chan?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the Millbrae City Council. Nathan Chan, Millbrae resident here, frequent commenter on matters of importance to the city. And yes, Mr. Kelly sort of led into the, made a similar request, and I'm going to repeat a lot of what he said already. You know, we, it's very, I think we're all very excited to be able to do meetings indoors and gatherings with people indoors, and I'm certainly looking forward to be able to go back to the city council chambers and have witness an in-person city council meeting again. However, before we commit to doing that transition fully, you know, I think, like Mr. Kelly said, you know, not everyone is able to make it to these meetings in person at City Hall. You know, pay people, parents of young kids, people who have mobility issues, or people who work in the evenings, to name just a few. So I'm also asking the city council and the staff to figure out a way to maintain the same level of access once in-person council meetings resume. Ideally, members of the public would be able to dial in or Zoom or continue to Zoom into city council meetings and be able to make public comments on items that they wish to comment on. I think this is especially important this year because I know that Millbrae is considering very important initiatives like its housing element, general plan, and active transportation plan. And and most of the engagement that I saw in the schedule for these plans would be happening via the Planning Commission and the City Council. So, you know, this, you know, let's figure out a way to make, give, maintain the level of access that we've become accustomed to over the last year, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. I don't see any other hands raised. This is last call. If anybody on Zoom wants to raise their hands. City Clerk, do we have anyone on the phone?
There is someone on the phone, but if they want to raise their hand, please press star nine to raise your hand.
And you don't have to. We just want to make sure you have the opportunity. Okay, I, I'm not.
Hi.
Oh, hello, Mr. Murphy.
Yes, hi. Sorry about that. I couldn't figure out how to switch my phone on.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Honorable City Councilor Millbrae, my name is Mark Murphy. I'm the Director of Sales and Marketing at the Villa Florence Hotel in San Francisco. I work for Pepperbrook Hotels and Resorts, who owns 10 hotels in the city. And our hotel management company is Schulte Hospitality Group, who manages approximately 167 plus hotels in North America. We have 14 of our hotels in the Bay Area. However, I'm writing you today, speaking on my own behalf. It's come to my attention that the city of Millbrae is in control of three parcels near your Bot and Caltrain stations. I'm speaking today to encourage you to kick off the exploration process for how these lots can be developed by issuing requests or proposals. I understand your city policy envisions a hotel among other, I'm sorry. I understand your city, I understand your city policy envisions a hotel among other uses on this city-owned property. I can speak from my experience as a hotel operator that a potential hotel sighted in this location could and would certainly be very successful. As a local Bay Area business member, as well as a Bay Area resident, I'd like to see the Millbrae community benefit from revenue generating uses of this city-owned land that will provide funding for services that will enrich the quality of life for Millbrae residents and visitors. I understand that the city and community ultimately decide to develop these sites, and they are exceptional. The sooner they can be put into use, the sooner benefits for all involved will accrue. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Elaine, do we have anybody else that you think? I don't see anybody else.
I do not see anyone else.
Hi, hi, this is Edgar De León. I'd like to speak for a moment. I have a prepared comment.
Okay, I'm sorry, Edgar. Could you say your name once?
Edgar De León, Edgar De León. Can you hear me now?
Thank you, Mr. De León. Please go ahead.
Yes. Good evening, honorable city council members. I have a prepared comment here for everyone. Again, my name is Edgar De León. I'm the Director of Business Development with a tech company in San Francisco, and like Mr. Murphy, I like to speak to the parcels of land here in Millbrae. This land could potentially generate substantial revenue if it is put to use, and I encourage you to see, to do it promptly. Building on city-owned property is a good idea because the city will enjoy myriad revenue streams, including predictable and ongoing lease payments, ongoing tax payments, one-time development fees and taxes from activities related to the building's operations, which may include transient occupancy taxes, other, otherwise known as TOT, if there's a hotel. As I'm sure you all well know, there's a shortage of uses to put this new revenue, youth programs, the new community center, public safety, schools, senior programs, infrastructure improvements are just a few destinations that would benefit from a funding boost. I'd also like to add that the high-speed rail, HSR, is progressing along its timeline, completing its environmental impact reports and its records, record of decisions. If we wait until the final moment, HSR could end up snatching this opportunity from right under our noses and will be left with basically nothing. So in conclusion, please act swiftly to begin exploring how this community-owned land can best be put to use for the community. The first step in this process will be issuing a request for proposals, RFPs, which should happen, this should happen as soon as possible, and each day that goes by, we are wasting potential revenue and getting one step closer to the calamity of losing this opportunity for good. If an RFP is not forthcoming soon, please schedule, please schedule an informational item in the next city council meeting to explain to the community where we stand and why the process is progressing so slowly. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. De León. Anyone else out there? Because I can't see you until you pop up. City Clerk, do you see anybody else?
I do not. I do want to remind everyone that if you want to raise your hand, there is an option on your computer toolbar. If you're calling in, please press star nine to raise your hand.
Thank you, City Clerk. Okay, with that, I'm going to close public communication and move to consent calendar. Elaine, did you receive or do we have any requests from the public to pull any agenda item from consent?
There is not. However, there is one electronic communication that was received for item item 10 in support.
Yep. Okay, and I heard from Councilwoman Papin, she would like to pull agenda item number nine from consent calendar. Council, do you have any other items you'd like to pull from consent? Please speak up.
Move approval of all other items.
Okay.
Love number 10 for sure. Great party.
It was really fun at their 25th. City Clerk, do I need to read each one of these into the the virtual meeting? Okay, I'm seeing shaking heads, no. So if I could have a motion, or I heard a motion from Councilwoman Papin, and a second to.
I seconded already, Vice Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Oliva on a second to approve agenda item five, six, seven, eight, and 10 on the consent calendar. Any comments, council? All right, City Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Holber?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Councilmember Papin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Oliva?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
Consent items five, six, seven, eight, 10 are, and 10 are approved by the vote of five to zero.
Thank you, City Clerk. Okay, if staff, are you prepared to do a presentation on agenda item number nine, which is the approval of a partial fee waiver for the use of the Millbrae Community Center Great Room by the San Mateo County Registration and Elections Divisions for the purpose of a special election vote center in November 2021?
I don't think we may need that. I just have a question.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Okay, why are we doing this so soon? Believe this special election depends on the Lieutenant Governor and a decision by her. That has not been done yet. I don't know why, you know, we're rushing this, and why are we giving the county, you know, a break here? I don't think they ever give us a break. So if you can answer those two questions, I'd appreciate it. I think this is very premature.
So, yeah, Mayor, if I may, so this was, this was a request of the county based on their timing. And so the total fee for the room rental is $2,414. And so they they had communicated us that this is not in their budget, the special election, and so they asked, asked if the city would agree to recommend to the city council that we waive 50% of the fee. So it would be $1,207 for the rental event. But Councilmember Papin, this was a request from the county, has, has nothing to do with us in terms of their planning. And they said that if, if they needed to pay the full fee, they most likely would not have a voting facility in the city of Millbrae.
Again, do you think this is premature? I would ask that this be pulled. The decision has not been made as to when this special election will even occur. And the county should really be going to the state of California or the people who put this initiative on the ballot to cover the costs. So I think by doing this so early, we are sending the wrong message. So I would ask that the council please remove this until future date. And the county needs to go to the state or the initiative people and get the funding for this.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Holber?
Thank you. I think it's important to note that the county did pay about, I think, a quarter of a million dollars for our temporary rec center. So I think giving them a break of about $1,000 is really not asking much from them. I think it's a foregone conclusion at this point that the recall election is going to happen. If for some reason it doesn't happen, the, they won't need the facility, so it'll be a moot point. So I'm happy with making a motion to approve this at this time.
Thank you, Councilman. Vice Mayor Oliva? Like to thank. Hold on, Gina. Hold on, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor Oliva?
Councilmember Papin, I respectfully disagree that it's premature. I think that we, we would like to be the host for any election, and I, granted, if it's not in play, then so be it. We won't host it. But I would agree with Councilmember Holber that the county's been very kind to us with our rec center, and if we can save $1,000 to our taxpayers, I would be happy to host, and I hope they all buy lunch after they vote, because it's, I think, one of the most popular voting spots in, I think it was a state, if I'm not, if I'm not wrong, but they can have lunch because we'll all be open downtown. And hopefully they can take a little detour to our Pizza Poller, our hamburger joint, our beautiful Chinese Asian restaurants, our kebab restaurant, and all of the above. So I respectfully disagree with Councilmember Papin, and I would like to see this happen in Millbrae.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I am the third vote. I agree with Councilman Holber and Vice Mayor Oliva. I understand them wanting to get this done, even if something may change in the fall. But they get it done now. They can go on with their, their, their work. It's a huge amount of work to put an election together. Are there any other, Councilman Fung, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you have a comment, I don't want to lose your opportunity.
That's fine. Thank you, Mayor. So I do, as the council, that I think that the county has been generous in the past with us. So, you know, lending a hand and ensuring that this recall election happens smoothly, and if it happens as well, then I think we should welcome that.
Yeah.
And the point that you made a little earlier about whether or not the I'm not sure constitutionally it has any bearing on it. So, but if it happens, it happens. If it doesn't happen, it becomes a moot point. So. So with that proposal.
Thank you, Councilman Fung.
Clear for the record, please.
Go ahead, Ms. Papin.
My points were, we are extremely grateful to Supervisor Pine for his assistance here. This is a separate county elections office. So distinguishing the two, we are exceptionally grateful to the county. I was trying to point out that they have, the election will happen, but not until the Lieutenant Governor decides, and that is supposed to be like sometime later this year. I just think this is premature at this point in time. So go ahead with the vote. It's just making a point here. It's going to happen. But again, it has not been announced as to when.
Yeah, I think that's more of a ministerial process than a discretionary process. It's not in our hands whether or not there's going to be a recall.
It is. I agree. I'm just telling you. I thought it was premature.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Papin and Councilman Holber. Can I have a motion to approve this motion?
Holber made.
Approval.
Thank you, Mr. Holber. Was there a second?
Vice Mayor Oliva?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. Any further discussion? City Clerk, could you call the roll, call the vote, please?
Okay, Councilmember Holber?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Councilmember Papin?
Aye.
Council, Vice Mayor Oliva?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The council approved a partial fee waiver for the use of the Millbrae Community Center Great Room by the San Mateo County Registration and Elections Division for the purpose of a special election vote center, passed by the vote of five to zero.
Thank you, City Clerk. Okay, next up is opening a public hearing. This agenda item number 11 is to host a public hearing and adoption of the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan and the Water Shortage Contingency Plan. This is an action item. We'll have a staff report and then open up the public hearing and follow through process.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Mr. Keilin, the city's Public Works Director for a presentation.
Thank you, City Manager Williams. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of Millbrae City Council, Keilin, Public Works Director. We have, we have a few people here that that will be presenting the Urban Water Management Plan tonight and also the Water Shortage Contingency Plan. So a couple actions that we need to take tonight. First, we need to open the public hearing to receive public comments. And second, we are asking the city council to adopt two separate resolutions. First resolution would be the formal adoption of the 2020 Millbrae Urban Water Management Plan. And the second resolution is the Water Shortage Contingency Plan. And also the resolution will authorize City Clerk to transmit both documents to the state on, before July 1st, 2021. So first up, we have representative from BASKA. BASKA is the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency. It is a 26-member agency organization that was created in 2002 to assembly, to assembly bill 2058 by late Honorable Assembly Member Lou Papin. So this is how it came to create the BASKA Agency for us representing our 26-member agency to negotiate with San Francisco Public Utility Commission, who happened to be our supplier of fresh portable water. And with that, I am going to introduce. And with that, I am going to introduce Mr. Tom Francis from Basca to provide a quick update on Basca assets and helping Millbrae formulating the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan. And also in the audience is our former mayor Dan Quick and also our Basca representative. So with that, I would like to share screen. City Clerk, can you open up our screen share, please?
Yeah, okay, Key, please start.
Thank you.
Good. Good evening, everybody. I'm Tom Francis. As Mr. Lim had said, I'm the Basca's Water Resources Manager. And I have about 11 slides. I'm giving you some background essentially on Basca. And one of the things that heavily influenced your urban water management plan, and that's what we call the Bay Delta Plan, which several of you may be aware of, but I'm going to spend a bit of time talking about it because, again, it did have what I would call is a major impact on the results of your urban plan. So first of all, Basca is, it stands for the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency. And I do have to admit, one of your council members and her family were very instrumental in creating that, as as Mr. Lynn said. And also, as he said, your representative on the Basca Board is Mr. Quick. Basca is a special district. We represent 26 water suppliers in San Mateo, Santa Clara, and Alameda County. You can kind of see that jigsaw puzzle type of a map off to the right. That kind of gives you the geographic coverage of Basca. It's a very large area and a good number of agencies as well. If you added up all the people that live within those districts, it counts to a little over 1.8 million residents and over 40,000 businesses and countless community organizations. So frankly speaking, if you include San Francisco in the mix, we're about 2/3 of the overall water users of this San Francisco system. So we're we're definitely make our presence known and we rely on that system. We sometimes, instead of calling it the San Francisco Regional Water System, we call it the Hetch-Echey System. That's the reservoir that's up in the northern part of Yosemite Valley. So next slide, please. So this this is the list of the member agencies. I'll focus on San Mateo County since that's where Millbrae is located. If you if you took a snapshot of San Mateo County, you'd see that almost all of the water agencies in the county are Basca member agencies. Although I will say that there's a couple small agencies that are not. So if you think of San Mateo, you'll you should really think of the San Francisco system and Hetch-Echey in terms of where your water comes from. Next slide. So this is a map which many of you may have seen from time to time. It shows how the water is collected through the Sierras up at Hetch-Echey Dam. That's off to the to the rightmost corner of this PowerPoint figure. There's a nice picture of Hetch-Echey Reservoir. I wish I could say it's always full, but we're in a drought and turn during times of drought. That's when we can see the reservoir storage start to draw down. Those red lines that kind of work their way over into the Bay Area, those are pipelines or tunnels that bring the water to San Mateo and Millbrae. The different pipelines are kind of branch off depending on where the water needs to go to, either in Alameda County or Santa Clara. It's all gravity fed, which is great when you think about the energy required to move the water. When you have a gravity system like this, we're saving not only money, but we're saving the environment in the sense that a lot of the cost of electricity in California, if you collected it all together, is due to pumping and and treatment, which is another nice thing about Hetch-Echey. Our water is extremely pure, so very little water treatment is required. So so this map is the Hetch-Echey System. It goes all the way from Yosemite to basically Fisherman's Wharf in San Francisco. So it's a pretty vast system, has lots of reservoirs, lots of hydropower plants, generate electricity, and lots of components. Beyond that, we we through San Francisco have lots of watershed land as well. Next slide. So now kind of the purpose of tonight is to talk a little bit about how a regulation, a new regulation, is impacting the water supply reliability for for not just Millbrae, but the other Basca member agencies. So to start with, one of the regulatory bodies that has a lot of control over water supplies is the State Water Resources Control Board. And we abbreviate it by calling it the State Board. Many years ago, the state of California established it with a specific assignment or goal to address water quality within the state and in particular within the Bay Delta. And by Bay Delta, I'm referring to the San Francisco Bay Sacramento River System, San Joaquin River System, and this Delta Estuary that's created by that confluence of rivers and and if you will, the ocean. In 2009, basically, there was a water quality control plan that had been in place for many years, but it needed to be updated. There's a mandate, a state mandate, to continually update the water quality control plan. Typically, it's every five years, but historically, it takes 10 or more years to update a control plan. So that process again was started in 2009. And instead of looking at that entire system, if you will, the Sacramento, San Joaquin, and the Bay and the Delta, they split it up and they said, maybe in the State Board, said, let's start with essentially the San Joaquin River tributaries as part of Phase 1 of this plan update. And that includes our river that provides us with the water, and that's the Tooney River, which essentially feeds Hetch-Echey and continues downstream to get into the Bay Delta. So the State Board in 2018 adopted what's called the Bay Delta Plan Phase 1 Update. And my next slides are going to talk a bit about that. But that's the the update actually had some requirements in place relative to stream flows that are are quite frankly, very impactful to our water supply reliability. It was adopted and it essentially increased the amount of river flow that needs to be continually provided. The State Board's adoption process has impacted us here in Millbrae, but also within all of the member agencies. It's also impacted the San Francisco retail customers as well. So basically, all of us are being impacted by this proposed Bay Delta Plan update that got passed in December of 2018. Next slide. So this is just a map to show you where the Tooney River is. And it also illustrates some of the major tributaries of this Sacramento-San Joaquin River System. So again, I said Phase 1 was only relative to the river systems that are on the San Joaquin River. They don't apply, right? Phase 1 does not apply to the Sacramento River System. So Phase 2 will be what applies to them, and that's coming up in in the years ahead. You know, unfortunately for us, Phase 1 was adopted, and so we as a region are having to deal with it. The remainder of the Bay Area and parts of the state are going to have to deal with Phase 2. Next slide. So what exactly does the Phase 1 Plan require? And I'll try to explain this a bit into layman terms. So in writing, it says that 40% of the unimpaired stream flow must be released every year, whether it's a wet or dry year, into the Lower Tooney River. And the period when that flow has to be maintained at that rate is from February through June of every year. So unimpaired flow is a term that means if the river wasn't dammed, if there was no manmade structures on the river, what would its flow be during these different year types? Assuming nothing was in place other than, you know, Mother Nature. So it's a fairly large number in terms of what unimpaired flow is. 40% seems like a lot, but let's compare it to what we've seen historically on the river. As as you folks are aware, San Francisco, the Public Utilities Commission, has lots of information and data and going back to the 1920s on that river. So if we look a little more recently, from 1971, unimpaired flow on an average was 32% during that time period. So it wasn't necessarily much lower than 40, but we need to tweak it down from there. During a wet year, like we had in in 2017, 2018, unimpaired flow was actually greater than 40%. But during dry years, and we're in one now, unimpaired flow is extremely low. It's 10% or even less during some critically dry years. So you can imagine if this plan is in place now and was being enforced, we would have to be releasing significantly more water on the river. And in essence, significantly less water would be flowing to us as part of our water supply needs. So it's a big concern. Prior to this adoption in 2018, and even moving forward since it's been adopting, since it's been adopted, the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission has expressed serious concerns. And they've had doubt about this ecosystem benefits that this quote-unquote Bay Delta Plan Phase 1 was going to generate. One of the reasons we have doubts is that the that the State Board, in terms of the science behind why they came up with that number, was using studies that were prepared on the northwest portion of California. So if you will, the the state of Washington and the state of Oregon. They ignored the many, many studies that have been performed on the Tooney River by us through San Francisco PUC or by the irrigation districts, Modesco and Turlock, that have had scientists and consultants and researchers on that river for many years. So 200 studies and it's many, many millions of dollars that have been spent on these studies. And so that gave us a lot of great concern that perhaps this Bay Delta Plan really is flawed from the perspective of is this required for the fishery needs on the river? It did not reflect the specific information that we have as to what the river conditions are now or what they would have been like during unimpaired flow. And more than that, we believe that it doesn't necessarily provide the ecosystem benefits that the state is touting that it needs or that it would result in. And by state, I mean the State Board. Next slide. So how is that affecting us at Millbrae? How this new Bay Delta Plan Phase 1 affecting us? And how does it relate to your particular urban water management plan? Well, let's look back at our recent drought. Hopefully, most of you can remember how you saved as a resident or homeowner during the 2015 timeframe. Well, during that recent drought, there was a requirement or there was a desire to get to somewhere between 20 to 30% rationing. That was, it wasn't a mandated rationing call, but that's what the state asked of us. That's what, you know, we at Basca and San Francisco were asking of our member agencies. And the flow rate at the or the the water use at the time of, I guess I'd say, the peak of the drought in 2015. And these numbers may not necessarily mean much to you, but it was 175 million gallons a day. And just for a perspective, right now, we use anywhere from 200 to 220 million gallons a day. So so back in 2015, we collectively, within the region, were using much less water. And I did pull up some records just to give you an indication of what was happening in Millbrae. During the entire drought from 2014 to 2017, your city and your residents were actually reducing their water use by 17%. So that was during that entire three-year drought period. And from 2015 to 16, which was, I guess I'd say, the height of the drought, our records show that your customers were even reducing more. They were at 22% in terms of the reduction of their water use. So that's great. But if you look at this, the thought behind what would happen if the Bay Delta Plan would have been in place during those periods? Well, the rationing that would be required would have been much, much greater. We would have, as a region, had to ration at anywhere between 40 to 50% of what's what we're using at a normal period. And and when I say contract level, your your contract with San Francisco actually allows you to use greater water than you're currently using. So if we were comparing that to your contract level, your allowable water use, you would have had to reduce even more. So just to kind of keep that feather in your hat. What would also result if the Bay Delta Plan was in place is that the number of years when we would be considered having a drought would double or triple. Right now, under the plan that had been in place prior to this new adoption, our our system was seeing a drought, maybe one in every 10 years. That's on average. And what we are finding through some of the modeling that San Francisco Public Utilities has done for us is that number of drought years could double. So it would be anywhere from two to perhaps as much as three years in 10, we would find ourselves in a drought. And and your consultant, Andre Johnson, who will be speaking after me, will talk a little bit more about what those findings would result in. So, you know, more drought occurrences and deeper cutbacks is is the result of this new Bay Delta Plan Phase 1 being in place. Next slide. So again, we were worried and we're upset about the Bay Delta Plan Phase 1. And and the question that you folks as council members have, may have, is well, what are we doing about it? Or what what's in place to try to either counter that or work with the State Board to to soften the blow to water users? Well, there's something that we call a voluntary agreement that's been developed. And when the State Board adopted that plan, the Bay Delta Plan in 2018, they said, well, right now, we're asking you as as water utilities to allow 40% unimpaired flow passed down through the river. However, we, the State Board, recognize that you, as the actual experts on the river, could come up with some other option, some sort of voluntary agreement that would adjust that, adjust it down so that perhaps the water required to be released is lower. But you would do other things to benefit the environment to counter that lower water use. So what we've been doing is trying to develop, and we have developed a voluntary agreement for the Tooney River that does just that. It meets the objectives of the Bay Delta Plan, which is more water to the fish or a better fishery habitat. But it doesn't harm our ability to have water supplied to meet our growth needs, our city needs, our residents' needs. So that's what some of my slides are going to talk about coming up. So again, I mentioned, we have over 200 studies on the river, and those form the basis for the voluntary agreement that's been developed. San Francisco and the districts have spent, as I mentioned, multimillion dollars. Right now, this shows 25 million on studies, but there's other work that's been involved on the river in terms of wetland restoration and other activities that could add to the dollar amount. Through these studies, we have significant information about what the fisheries needs are on the river, and that fed into this voluntary agreement that we've put together. And it also has significant technical support from not just the water agencies, but other groups that are studying the river and looking at the fishery needs. So this proposal that we've come up with has many, many different measures aside from just more flow. It it we include functional flows, flows that are timed to release when we know that the migratory needs of the fish are being met. So instead of a, you know, six months worth of flow, we're looking at pulse flows or functional flows that ramp up and down and are maintained maybe for several weeks at a time instead of several months. We're also proposing as part of this voluntary agreement that habitat be restored. Fishery habitat includes a lot of woody debris, gravel, and necessarily changes within the river itself to improve fishery spawning habitat. We're also looking at floodplain mitigation. There's been some, but we're going to try to do more or we're proposing to do more, I should say. And then predator control and managing of aquatic weeds. Predators are other fish that basically feed off the salmon. And then better management of hatcheries. There's a hatchery on the Tooney River. And and the proposal is to do more, to expand that hatchery and to develop better practices to try to ensure the survival and health of of the salmon fishery. Next slide. So Basca has been saying for quite some time, and San Francisco and and others have as well, that voluntary agreements are the best path forward. As I mentioned, when the State Board adopted that plan in 2018 that we're all faced with, that you're being faced with for your urban water management plan, they did include a framework for voluntary agreements to meet or exceed their proposed objectives. And we believe the Tooney River voluntary agreement will do just that. Governor Newsom is very supportive of a voluntary agreement. We view that his leadership on that is quite critical, and we're very pleased at Basca as well as other entities such as San Francisco PUC and the Irrigation Districts. They're very pleased with his leadership and his positive push towards voluntary agreements. The California Key Secretary, so if you think about a secretary, their key appointments are underling, so to speak, of Governor Newsom. They're very supportive supportive of the voluntary agreement. So you may hear heard of these names, Wade Crowfoot, who runs the California Department of Natural Resources, or Jared Blumenfeld, who runs the CalP EPA. They're both very supportive of voluntary agreements. So that's a good sign because we need we need their support. We need more than just the water agencies pushing this. And we're working hard to move that forward. So I can say, and this is why I'm talking to you tonight, what's in your plan hopefully isn't going to be what's in your future. Because we want to see these voluntary agreements put in place that are going to significantly help our water supply future. I will have to admit voluntary agreements can can move forward quickly, but essentially, there's a lot of talking that has to happen, a lot of stakeholder engagement. Talks have have sputtered to a stop, and then they they start up again. As of a couple of months ago, they had started up again, going pretty strong. But now we're in a drought. So some of those people that were in the room at the state level have to focus on what they're going to deal with in terms of drought needs, and we expect them back at the table in a month or so, once they have their plan formulated. So again, they're moving forward. We'd like to see them moving forward quicker, but essentially, they are moving forward. Basca as an agency is is continuing our efforts to support this voluntary agreement. And we've worked with a lot of the elected officials that overlie our region, both assembly members and state senators to garner their support, and we're we've been successful in that. We continue to work with the mayors of different cities to get their support. For example, we've we've just gotten the support of Mayor Licardo from San Jose towards the voluntary agreement. So I will say Director Quigg, the Basca Director, is very engaged in this. We appreciate his engagement as well as the other Basca board members that that serve to to kind of guide us in terms of the work effort that we at Basca do. Now, one thing I'd say that in the absence of settlements, we'd just be stuck in litigation. San Francisco, the irrigation districts, mostly all the water utilities in the state that are relying on the Bay Delta for supply have sued the state over their Bay Delta plans. So litigation is never. So litigation is never necessarily an easy thing. It's costly. It can drag on for many, many, many years. And so that's why we're all very supportive of voluntary agreement. If you consider it, it's a settlement agreement to, to get, you know, a workable plan in place that will help the environment, but also will protect us as water agencies. Next slide. So the last couple of slides, I wanted to just share this with you. I know sometimes people, and, and I haven't heard it from your city council, but, but sometimes when, when cities have reviewed their urban plans, they say, this is coming as a surprise. How come we didn't know about this shortfall sooner? Shouldn't this have been, you know, raised by Basca earlier? What, what has Basca been doing? So I wanted to just mention this. It's kind of a, a little bit of a, a time chart. I won't read every sub-bullet on here. I think it would drag your meeting way too late, but it started in two thousand and nine with the, basically, the start of the Phase One Plan was, was worked on by the state board. Basca became engaged in, in, from 2019 through to 2013, various draft forms of the Phase One Plan were released, as well as a SEQA document. We provided comment letters that talked about these impacts, similar to what I just shared. So we did weigh heavily that we're very concerned. San Francisco as well talked about how the science appeared to be inadequate. Basically, the state listened to us and they revised their SEQA. So it took them until 2016 to revise it, but yet it still fell short for the reasons that I mentioned. It didn't look at the impacts to the water users, to us. It didn't talk about how, how cutting back by fifty percent may not necessarily be possible, or how hard it is, challenging it is to develop the types of alternative supplies that would need to be put in place to fill that large of the gap. One of the realizations that came out of this was that Governor Brown, when he talked to his state board folks, he said, we need to be open to these voluntary agreements to resolve this. And he actually had appointed Secretary Babbitt, who used to work in the Clinton administration, to try to help lead some of these efforts. So again, I said I wouldn't resolve or go through all these bullets. In 2017, they released the draft plan. While they tried to deal with these voluntary agreements and make progress, not, not enough progress was made. And so ultimately, what happened was that in 2018, the state board adopted this Phase One Plan. And since that time, immediately lawsuits were filed, including lawsuits by San Francisco, the PUC, but essentially the city and county of San Francisco. Basca intervened on those lawsuits, and, and our, our legal firm, Hanson Bridget, has been instrumental in, in helping make sure that we're basically have a seat at the table as these lawsuits move forward. And again, as part of this voluntary agreement discussion that's taking place, San Francisco has the seat at the table, but under an agreement with us, San Francisco keeps us essentially at the table as well. So we're informed of the progress, and, and we can make sure that we continue to have that seat. So that's essentially where we're at right now. Fortunately, the state agencies are working on voluntary agreements. Those were talked about in 2020. They continue to be talked about in 2021. Again, I'm sort of closing my slides here. We do have a Twomey River voluntary agreement that hopefully will move into the state board's hands as an alternative for them to review. But essentially, the challenge that comes about for, for you as a city is that you'll need to weave this story into your plan. And the information that San Francisco provided to you as, as a city has to assume something that's solid. And so what they're assuming is, right now, the only thing that they know for sure is that the state adopted Phase One. They adopted the Bay Delta Plan. And while there's certainly high hopes for this voluntary agreement, nothing is certain in terms of that being in place. So similarly, they have a lot of alternative water supply projects that are woven into the discussion in your plan, things like desalination, dam raises, groundwater banking, all sorts of things that could be in place if, for some reason, they're unsuccessful with a voluntary agreement. But those will take time. So in terms of your plan and the numbers that your consultant will be presenting shortly, the numbers for your, your shortfalls show that nothing, nothing will, will move forward, which I do not believe will be the case. But for the purposes of your plan, it shows, here's the cutbacks that you're going to have to make as a city with the Bay Delta Plan in place. And those cutbacks, as you'll soon see, are severe. So again, my purpose is to give you a little bit of background into the, you know, why this information was put in your plan and, and how long and how hard Basca, and, and, and essentially, your, your reps with Basca, your cities, your water management reps that sit on our, that, that work with us as staff at Basca, just how involved they've been over the last ten years. So Key, that kind of concludes my presentation. I'm, I'm happy to answer questions now, or if you want Andre to present her, her information relative to your urban plan, I can answer questions when that presentation is done.
Thank you, Mr. Tom Francis. I would like to take a quick pause on the council to consider if you have any question immediately for, for Mr. Tom Francis, Basca staff. If not, I would like to proceed to the next presentation, which is the Urban Water Management Plan.
Key, I have one question. Having read the staff report and the plans, and understanding that we're coming into yet another drought, I, I get where Mr. Francis is coming from, but I didn't expect all of that tonight. So will you be taking in the staff report, Key? Will you be taking in what he's just told us in debt to what's going to be in the plan? Because I didn't prepare my notes that way.
Yes, we are going to be walking to the Urban Water Management Plan and also Appendix K, which is the Water Shortage Contingency Plan. There is no drought declaration as of yet, but we are preparing to do so as soon as the emergency declaration is announced.
Okay, thank you. I do have questions, Mr. Francis, but I'm the one that most likes to dive into details on this. They may be after the fact, if we're not, if they're not needed for tonight. Thank you, though. Thank you for your presentation, scary as it is.
I have a question, please.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
So, um, thank you for all the work and all the details, and, and the presentation was, like the mayor said, pretty scary. But I, I, this is all great, but like, we're celebrating that the, the governor's on board, but yet he's also on board to, like, hundreds and thousands of units of housing as well. So how is this, how are we gonna, how are we gonna take all this on together when that's not part of the report?
Well, certainly, I, I-
I'm, I'm the first- Excuse me. And I, part of the report which I find missing is not only the infrastructure, but also storage. Because when we did have 2018, an abundant amount of water, we just let it all rush away. And I'm wondering how we can find solution other than, you know, droughts or abundance? If we can find some sorts of solutions in the presentation, or, or to get the, the, the governor on board to a, a solution more than just a report, if that's fair enough. And I'm not trying to shoot the messenger. Don't get me wrong.
No, I, I, I hear your frustration. I've heard it at other cities as well. I know that you're dealing with RENA numbers and how you're going to make those, you know, housing needs sort of in the short term between now and 2030, and also the population projections that you're dealing with in terms of the growth that, you know, that I suspect you want to see in your city. You know, growth to meet low house, low income housing, whatever, you know, whatever needs you might see. The, the demand study that Andre will talk about does factor in what your projected future demand needs are. So that's part of your urban plan. I will say that Basca, along with our member agencies, will be working on reviewing Plan, Plan Bay, you know, ABAG's Plan Bay Area 2050, and providing comments on that. They have an EIR document that's coming out. One of our concerns is that the water supply reliability necessarily have a clear nexus to the, the housing projections that they come up with. It is a concern. I don't have a silver bullet either to tell you, here's how we're going to have to deal with it. I just know it is a challenge.
Right. And I don't, I, I know there's no silver bullet, or it wouldn't be questioned on both sides here, but I think that it needs to be heard that the mandate is not only the rationing, the mandate is the RENA numbers. So it doesn't add up any way you look at it. And I think that that, that needs to be part of this presentation. Because the governor obviously gets his presentation as well.
Well, we, we are working, as I said, to try to, there, there's a subset of the agencies here in San Mateo County that are kind of bandied together, and I'm not sure if Millbrae's part of it, but to talk to the, the, the folks at the state level that are coming up with these housing assessments, these housing numbers, and to present to them the challenge that we as a region have in terms of getting the adequate water supply to meet with them. So that message, I believe, is coming through, and we're talking to our, I, I mentioned in terms of the Twomey River voluntary agreement. We've had significant outreach to the elected representatives that, that are in Sacramento, and they're going to be prepared to talk to the governor, as well as, you know, through their own voices, talk about these concerns that our water supply needs are, are, are huge already. And, and as we grow and have to deal with these numbers, your folks in this housing group, you being the governor, you're, you're going to have to get the housing people together with the state board, because this is a challenge. We can't have the state board telling us that our water supply is going to be shrunk when you have another department within the state that says, oh, and you need to, you know, make more homes or, or more residential units available. So-
And please, please don't forget the fact that there are years of surplus, and alls we'll do is let it run off.
We're, we're, some of the alternative water supply projects that I think Andre will, will be able to talk about that are written in the plan do have means in place to, if you will, sort of capture that. Groundwater banking is one of the ways that you can actually take water that's available and, and, you know, basically place it in the groundwater, banked in, in the Central Valley, and that's where they're having some problems in terms of overdraft and, and using that supply or using that basin as storage so that we can draw from it during these dry periods. Because frankly speaking, our supply is really reliable other than drought years. Drought years is when we need it. The other idea, and, and these are alternative projects, is to raise the, the height of dams where we have water supply already in place. One of those is Calaveras Reservoir that's in Alameda County that San Francisco PUC has. So if we expand storage, some of those existing reservoirs, we can create it too. And then I, I, I do want to say the good work of, of, of your Public Works Director, and I think you have it on your agenda tonight, is our things like recycle water projects or, or portable reuse projects, different things like that that can, you know, turn what is, what was once considered a waste into a supply. And that's another, you know, that's another way that we, as a region, can try to address some of these shortfalls that might happen if, if regulations like this continue.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, are you okay for now? Can we get staff to do their report and then open up the public hearing? Okay, Key-
I think Councilmember Pepin has-
Oh, I, I don't. Go ahead, Councilwoman Pepin. Sorry, I didn't see anything.
My hand's been up for a while. Thanks. Um, yes, I completely agree with the Vice Mayor here. We're getting, demanding new housing. We don't have the water supply. Our residents are furious at the cost of water, which we cannot get under control. We don't even have the infrastructure, which is collapsing right now. We can't pay for this. There has to be some relief for the residents here. I talked to the mayor of Brisbane today. She's begging for the developer that she has for some twenty-three hundred units to get water to, and nobody's helping. So this is critical into what's happening here. Sacramento needs to wake up. You can't say you have to do all of this. You have to do all of that. We're stuck in the middle now with not only water, housing, and high-speed rail. You, you guys are killing us. Something has to be done. Thank you.
Okay, um, if there are no other council comments, Key, Director Lim, could you please go forward? And just keep in mind, we're at eight, almost eight-thirty right now.
Thank you, Mayor Mayor. On next up, I'd like to introduce Andre Johnson from Woodland and Current. You may recall Andre appeared in front of you on April thirteenth, providing a quick informational report on this upcoming public hearing tonight, giving you a brief presentation on the Urban Water Management Plan and Water Shortage Contingency Plan. So with that, I'd like to introduce Ms. Johnson. And Andre, I will screen share the PowerPoint.
Thank you, Key. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm here to give you a brief presentation on your Urban Water Management Plan and Water Shortage Contingency Plan before these documents are considered for adoption. Next. The city is prepared its draft 2020 Urban Water Management Plan and Shortage Contingency Plan in accordance with the California Water Code requirements. So we're here tonight to receive public comments on these documents and to consider adoption of both plans. Next. A little background on Urban Water Management Plans. This is a water resources planning document to evaluate the city's water supply reliability over a twenty-five-year planning horizon. Urban Water Management Plans are required by the California Water Code. Each urban water supplier must update their plan every five years. The city's last Urban Water Management Plan was adopted in 2016, and the current plan is due to DWR by July first of 2021. Completion of an Urban Water Management Plan is required to be eligible for any state grant funding, and the plan requirements are highly prescriptive in a format required by the Department of Water Resources. Next. The city's 2020 Urban Water Management Plan includes historical, current, and projected water demands and water supplies over a twenty-five-year planning horizon. This plan extends to 2045. The plan also reports upon the city's compliance with the state twenty percent by 2020 water conservation targets, as well as supply reliability under both normal conditions and drought year conditions over the planning horizon. The plan also includes discussion of your current and planned water conservation measures, as well as an update to your Water Shortage Contingency Plan to specify the actions that would be taken to address supply shortfalls. Next. I'd like to take a few minutes just to walk you through some of the highlights of your Urban Water Management Plan, starting with your water demand projections. The Urban Water Management Plan utilizes the demand projections that were prepared for the city of Millbrae by Basca as part of its 2020 demand study. These demand projections anticipate that the city's water use will increase by seventy percent between 2020 and 2045, reaching eleven-seventy million gallons per year in 2045. The demand study shows these increases due to a few factors, one of which is the anticipated population growth in the city based upon the A-BAG numbers. It also incorporates the planned growth from the Millbrae Station area specific plan. In addition, the demand study incorporates some demand rebound, as we call it, which is the water use reductions that were achieved during the last drought. It is assumed that some of those reductions will bounce back over time as customers return to pre-drought behaviors. The demand projections do anticipate some additional active and passive water conservation beyond what is already occurring in the city, consistent with your planned programs through 2045. Next. A little good news amid some of the dire reliability numbers and Bay Delta Plan challenges is on the city's water conservation numbers. If you'll recall, the city was required to achieve a water conservation target in 2020 per the SB X seven dash seven, a conservation legislation that was adopted in 2009. The city's target was a water use of one hundred seventeen gallons per capita per day overall. And the city has meet and beat this target. Your actual per capita water use in 2020 was eighty-two gallons per capita per day, which is well below the target number, and really reflects the significant work that has been done by your staff and your residents over the past decade to improve water use efficiency. Next. On the water supply front, the Urban Water Management Plan anticipates that the city's sole potable water source through the planning horizon would be from the San Francisco PUC supplies. The city has a supply guarantee of one thousand one hundred fifty million gallons per year from SFPUC, which would be sufficient supply to meet projected demands in normal years through the twenty-five-year planning horizon. Next. As Tom alluded to previously, the Bay Delta Plan would have significant impacts on the city's water reliability in dry years. The Urban Water Management Planning Act requires that retailers coordinate with their wholesale water suppliers in preparation of their Urban Water Management Plans. Consistent with that requirement, your Urban Water Management Plan relies upon the reliability analysis that was prepared by SFPUC and supplemented by Basca. For your reliability assessment. SFPUC, as Tom shared, utilized the assumptions of the Bay Delta Plan implementation beginning in 2023. For this reliability analysis. And the graph I'm showing you here is the worst-case scenario within the twenty-five-year planning horizon. This is a five-year, multiple-year drought period beginning in 2045. Based upon projected demands upon SFPUC from Millbrae as well as its other retail and wholesale customers. Under this scenario, the city would experience shortfalls of up to fifty-four percent in years four and five. Of this multiple-year drought sequence. Next. San Francisco also provided the reliability analysis for the regional water system without the Bay Delta Plan implementation. And we have also included this information in the plan as an information item. Without the Bay Delta Plan implementation, the city would, under the same twenty forty-five, five-year drought sequence. Experience shortages of up to twenty-four percent in years four and five of a multiple-year drought. Next. Along with the Urban Water Management Plan, we have also prepared an update to the city's Water Shortage Contingency Plan. Also required by the Water Code and the Water Shortage Contingency Plan. Provides the actions that would be taken in order to address supply shortfalls within the planning horizon. Including shortfalls of greater than fifty percent. There have been some significant changes to the Water Code since 2015. Um, requiring some more prescriptive elements to water shortage contingency plans. One of the changes is that the Water Shortage Contingency Plan. Now needs to be adopted as a separate resolution from the Urban Water Management Plan. And so that hence there are two resolutions before you tonight. As far as the other changes to the Water Shortage Contingency Plan, well, there are quite a few new prescriptive elements in the state requirements. The city already had a relatively robust shortage contingency plan compared to many suppliers in the state. Um, so the changes to the plan were relatively minor and included adding a sixth stage to address shortages of greater than fifty percent. Next. Consistent with the state requirements, your shortage contingency plan provides um stepwise. Implementation of shortage levels to address shortages of varying levels, including shortages of five percent or less as well as shortages of greater than fifty percent. The Shortage Contingency Plan contains a series of demand and management measures in order to achieve these reductions. And consistent with the priorities that were previously established. Indoor health and safety water use is the highest priority water use in the plan. Followed by water use for businesses. Outdoor water use is the lowest priority and the first to achieve to um be cut during a shortage. Next. So walking through the timeline here, um, we gave an update on the Shortage Contingency Plan at your April City Council meeting. The plan has been posted to the city's website for public review for the past two weeks. Um, tonight we'll hold the public hearing on the plan and you can consider the plan for adoption. And then, once the plan is adopted, we will submit that plan to DWR by July first in order to be in compliance with the Water Code requirements. That concludes my presentation. Happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you, Andre. So, uh, Madam Mayor, we'll take a little quick pause and wait to see if council has any question of members of the public of the audience. Have any question regarding uh the Urban Water Management Plan or the Water Shortage Contingency Plan?
Fair, I just want one last staff input here and uh not not to put Andre on the spot, but have you seen any city with a lower per capita? Water usage than the city of Millbrae because that is that is exceptionally low.
Um, you know what? If you asked me that question and I looked at your per capita numbers six or seven years ago, my answer would have been no. However, there are some of your neighbors on the peninsula who have water use levels that are at about the same level as the city. However, Millbrae is among the lowest water use per capita agencies in when you look at the overall statewide numbers.
Uh, thank you very much for that clarification.
Thank you. Director Lim, um, I see that Councilwoman Papin has a Quig, has a question. And so does our Representative de Basque, Dan Quigg, but we haven't opened the public hearing yet. Councilwoman Papin, are you okay if we open the public hearing and then we can go from you to 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 um Member Quigg? Okay, if I could have a motion, please, to open the public hearing?
You don't need a motion. You can just.
Tom told me I did. I keep getting different directions from everyone. I'm only trying to do what I'm told.
Okay.
Sorry, I just went off of my background with.
No, don't need it, but go for it. I want to have a motion, have a motion.
I know this. I'm a little frustrated because this has happened several times.
I know it has.
And and I I I'm trying to do it the right way. So our city count, our, if we don't have to open it, I am hereby opening the public hearing without a motion. Thank you, uh, uh, Counselor Kazman. Gina, go ahead. Uh, Councilwoman Papin, my apologies.
Sorry, now I'm confused. I thought you were going to open the public hearing.
I did.
Okay.
I just opened it.
All right, well, I'm not necessarily the public, I guess, but um, so first and foremost, um, thank you all for um paying my dad some. Uh, recognition. He worked very, very hard on assembling this group and glad to see it's still moving ahead strongly. So thank you very, very much. I really appreciate that. Uh, secondarily, okay, I understand this is a required report. And you've heard from the Vice Mayor and myself here. Why don't we just throw in, it seems like the less we use, the more we pay. Because San Francisco keeps increasing their costs. Our residents are very frustrated here. So can we throw into this a little information that, hey? You've got Rena numbers that are going to cost us this and why aren't we advocating within our report? Because I think we're going to have to do a lot more advocating. This is becoming very frustrating to us. And I I can tell you, having just come off an election, that the residents and I myself are furious that we cannot bring the cost of water down. So can we please be more communicative in what we report out? Uh, that, you know, we, they're really burdening the local jurisdictions, given the impact of housing. And other aspects here. We we will continue to do what we're supposed to do, but the message is not getting through. So is there a way to be more impactful, please?
Uh, if I may, uh, Mayor, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Director.
Councilmember Papin, to uh, to answer your questions, uh, simply put, uh, we will continue to work with Basca. I'm glad that many of the workshops subsequently towards the end, I think workshop number four, number five. We started talking about Rena numbers and there's some mentionings about getting MTC involved. Because MTC is tying federal funding to uh priority development area to collect the street, Arturo Street, and also housing number. So we do want to bring that, uh, bring the water supply, water and resources issue to the MTC board to let them be aware of that. But that's one thing that I know that Basca is actively working on. And second, the Urban Water Management Plan is highly prescriptive. Like what Andre Johnson had mentioned before, we are not sure what else can we throw in there. So we could discuss if Andre separately. Include some descriptions about Rena numbers in it and if that is allowed and would have to throw something in there. Uh, just tie it together.
Yes, no, please, um, because, all right, since I have to be on MTC and listen to this all over again. I mean, you you hear from MTC, you hear about the Bay Area twenty fifty thing. And, you know, they've got all these principles which none piece together. Build housing, build it, and everything is great and wonderful, but when you put all the pieces together, this is what happens. We don't have enough water for what we build and all that. So we have to send the message in all directions if possible, please. Thank you very much.
You are absolutely correct. We will be working on that. And also, I would like to go back to Vice Mayor's questions about replenishing water supply. I know there's one regional project that SFPUC is embarking and I think is almost like completion, if not already completed. We see Peninsula Groundwater Recharge Project. They have recharged all of the underground uh, uh, water table. So that is actually a good thing. So SFPUC will be replenishing uh, the underground water storage during those abundant years when we have plenty of rainfall. So that is, uh, I know this is not the complete answer, but I know that we are working with SFPUC and Basca is addressing that as well.
I would agree. That's a step in the right direction.
Yes, thank you.
Public Works Director Kim Key and City Manager. We need to have a wa- an infrastructure subcommittee, which is uh, Councilman Halliburton, myself. What I'd like you to do is take notes when you're listening to us of the things that are more legislative in nature. So asking us to conserve water but build more housing is legislative in nature. Any, I've got a whole list of things. Uh, City Manager, now you and I have talked about the funding for converting our sewage treatment plant to tertiary, which is in the plan. And later on in today's agenda, but let's get an infrastructure meeting together and start that letter. I know that we have two council members that are on CCG's Legislative Committee and make sure that they are bringing it to CCG Legislative Committee. And let's start taking a more active pushback on this because you just, they expect everything of us. And I will say at the same time, I was at the Cap and Trade Fund Hearing la- uh, last week. And of the one point five billion dollars, they gave over seven hundred million to high-speed rail. So you can't, and not, almost nothing to any recovered or recycled or secondary water, tertiary water at all. So clearly, the governor needs to hear that you can't expect us to do this and then give all the money to high-speed rail and housing. And no money to come up with a water supply for it, which is uh converting our sewage water into potable water. Uh, with that, Director Quigg, I'm opening this up for public comments. I'm not sure, Director Quigg, you're our representative, so you're kind of like in.
Well, I I would.
A council member, so please go ahead.
I would like to speak as a representative of Basca. Number one, I would like to thank Mr. Francis for his excellent presentation. You know, if I was making a presentation to the city council, I would just say, we're working diligently to get support for the Bay Delta Plan. So we can, you know, get the voluntary support and we are working with them, with, of course, the governor, as we said. We're also working with other legislative representatives to get support for that plan. Number one, I would like to also commendate and congratulate uh, uh, Mr. Lou Papin for his work in in getting the legislation. To happen so that the whole project from Hetch Etchey all the way to San Francisco and to Millbrae and all neighboring cities. Had a reliable system of water because before that, the system was not very reliable, was over a hundred years old. And now we have redundant pipes and we have pipes that go into the bay that can move back and forth during an earthquake and they won't break. And that was all because of the legislation he created, which is a great thing and that makes our water supply. Going to be here for a long period of time. The other thing is I want to say, I want to agree with um. Kim Lee and Kim, because Kim said that the um. The San Francisco PUC is working with filling aquifers when they have an abundant water supply so that they can draw off those aquifers during a drought season. And they are working diligently with many aquifers in the peninsula, also in San Francisco. And also in San Bruno, our neighboring city, to fill aquifers so that there is water supply during drought seasons. So anyway, that's all I'd like to contribute to this, you know, information. So thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Director Quigg. That's the right title, Director of Basque.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, thank you. Um, opening it up for comments for, oh, Vice Mayor, and but. Opening it up to comments from the public. If you could raise your hand, if you've got a comment, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Just a question for uh, Dan. Dan, those those aqua filters, when you say they're working on it, what's the projection?
Well, some of these aquifers are, you know, have been drawn down over the years in the valley. And also in other neighboring cities because they've used them extensively, especially during drought season. So. What the San Francisco PUC is working on is when they have an ex- an abundant supply of water like you were talking about in twenty eighteen. And the reason that they can't keep that supply, you can only store so much water at the dam. So if the snowfall is extensive and the dam starts filling up, you have to let the water out of the dam. So you can't keep the water. There is a little bit of water banking and the San Francisco PUC does water banking. And the water banking process, I'll give you a little information about that. What they did is when they wanted to raise the lake at um. Don Pedro, the San Francisco Public Utilities Committee. Said that they would pay for half of the cost of the dam to raise the lake if they could do water banking. Well, water banking is like putting money in the bank. What they do is when they have an excess amount of water, they send it over to that lake and they store it. So then, when a drought season like now comes, if the water banking is full, they can draw off that water banking to continue to supply. Water to our customers, our one point two million customers plus the commercial residents. And right now, uh, the water banking at uh, Don Pedro is about eighty percent full. So even during a drought season, there's quite a bit of water there. So we can draw up that water supply for at least a couple of years. And and supply our residents with an accurate amount of water. So that's, that's some more information about what's going on with water banking and aquifers.
And who pays for that?
Who, how? San Francisco Public Utilities is paying for that. Of course, you know, everything the San Francisco Public Utilities pays for, we pay seventy-five percent as Basque members because we use seventy-five percent of the water.
Right. Thank you, Dan.
Sure.
Okay.
I am looking for any comments or questions from the public. City Clerk, do you have anybody on the phone? I I'm wondering if we didn't quite advertise this to the public the way we might have had people coming to us. But maybe that will come to us with water rates on that. Okay, um, I don't see anybody raising their hands. With that, I'm going to close the public comment period. And, uh, council, uh, time for questions? If not, I'm going to take my list of questions and this might be for, oh, Councilman Halliburton, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I had one question about uh, on the um, Water Management Plan. Um, the population estimates, this is on page nine I X. It's page sixteen of the attachment.
I'm sorry, Councilman, what page was that?
Yeah, it's it's page um, nine, right, by nine, I mean, I X in the Water Management Plan. Uh, it's in the, in the summary. Anyways, it shows basically the city population. Growing between twenty twenty-five and twenty thirty and then more or less left wing out between twenty thirty and twenty forty-five. Uh, which I think is inconsistent with, you know, the Rena targets. If we were to meet the Rena targets, imagine significantly greater growth. After twenty thirty, so I was curious where. And I saw it says that a projection is coming from A-Bag, but A-Bag also sets the Rena targets for us. This doesn't seem to be an accurate projection of of future population growth in Millbrae.
Sure. Um, so a little background on those population projections, these were the A-Bag twenty seventeen population numbers. Um, and it was simply a matter of timing in preparing the demand projections for the Urban Water Management Plan. The Basca Demand Study used what was then the most recent numbers, which were those A-Bag. The Basque Demand Study used what was then the most recent numbers, which were those A-Bag numbers. And so since then, my understanding is that A-Bag has been in the process of preparing some updates to those numbers. So there may be some changes between the latest A-Bag numbers and those that were used for planning purposes.
Can we maybe note that in the report that based on the new Reno numbers, this seems to be an underestimate of future population growth in Millbury?
Yep. Yeah, we definitely will look into updating those numbers. Councilmember Holibur.
Yeah, I don't know if they have the projections now, but I think it's worth at least a footnote or something.
Okay.
That's all that I have for now. Thank you.
Councilman Holibur, the other demographic shift has been people moving out of big urban cities to the suburbs. I know the city manager and I have talked about it. A lot of that is, is also including college kids who didn't go off to college. Do we want to put another footnote that we're kind of in a transition period and those numbers could change too? Or is that just a blip and COVID will be just a blip and we'll get back to normal in another year?
I might, I might recommend that we wait for the census data to come out and, and then we will have you know, really confirmed numbers.
Okay.
But I think, I think noting it as, as council member, as the council member I had mentioned is a, is a good idea, is a good point.
Okay, good.
Well, the next Reno cycle is 2023 through 2031. And I have a feeling that Reno is not going to end in 2031. There'll be more numbers, there'll be another Reno period after that and it'll probably be even greater than the next upcoming cycle.
Okay. My questions might be more appropriate for when we actually come back if we go into a water emergency. City Manager, will we have a new agenda item in a future council meeting if we are mandated to go in that direction?
We will, Mayor.
So some of my questions then, just so that you know what I'll be thinking of them, is we stopped doing toilet rebates. And I can't remember where the money came for that. We had just begun the Lawn Begone program. But what I'm seeing when I go through town is the lawns have been gawning to become plastic lawns, which then become a microplastic problem in waterways. So I'm, I don't want us to lose track that the Lawn Begone program, we were late to coming to. But I think one of the reasons why we have such a low per capita use of water is that we look very dry and bare compared to other cities because people haven't jumped back to their water use of after the last drought. I know only one month last year did I hit 13 units when I was really watering. Otherwise, my plants have to survive on their own. And I, the same thing with showerheads. I don't think we're completely as clear on gray water systems. I hear from the public that it's not clear if they wanted to reuse their gray water on site, that it's still legal to do so, or how to do so, or how to permit it. So when we come back in that water emergency. I had sent an email to you, City Manager, and Public Works Director Lim. San Bruno, right next to us, does rely on groundwater. They always take from their aquifers. Aquifers collapse when they don't get enough water pumped back into them. I would like to know in the future, what is that doing to any subsidence in Millbury? And that SFPUC has a well at their land down off El Camino Real. Are they doing, what are, what are they doing and what will it do to the foundations of our homes if we, if they start pumping more on that? The, this goes back to what Councilman Pappan said and, and the Vice Mayor. I think we've all seen it. Our residents are very angry with water rates and it doesn't matter that we explain to them that there are fixed costs. And even when your consumption goes down, the fixed costs stay the same. And then I'll go back to the governor's budget right now. He's put a lot of money for a range of climate change activities, but none of them are helping us create our own new water supplies, which is tertiary supply. And I would like all of us, and I would like Basque to be saying, we can't simply rely on the Sierras anymore. We need to be using our sewage water, even if it's just to water the lawns on that. And I'd, I'd like to see us have that pathway. My last question. I don't know when, what, Mr. Francis, when you talked about creating the voluntary agreements, are you talking to Peter Dreckmeyer and Tuolumne River Trust and the other, other Enviro groups? Where are they on this volunteer thing?
Well, I need, I need to be frank with you. They're supporting the Bay Delta Plan Phase One. They're not supportive of
I've seen the letter.
Yeah. And, you know, our desire, the, the message that we have at Basque, I believe is, is something that cities can embrace, even if they feel pressure from, from the environmentalists like Peter Dreckmeyer. Our message right now is that we want the state board to evaluate the Bay Delta Plan. In other words, take an honest look at it. Honest may be the wrong term here, but review it. Look at it to make sure that it would meet the needs. We believe it would, but we're saying, let this, you know, if you will, this impartial party review it and make, you know, make some determination. Yes, it works or no, you need to add this, that, the other thing, whatever they may be. And, and so we are, you know, we are very, you know, concerned that yes, the environmental groups do not support voluntary agreements. But, you know, our goal and the state's goal through the governor is to fashion one that can be shown sort of through this impartial process that it could work.
Okay. And how many years did the Bay Delta Agreement take before it was finally approved?
Well, as I mentioned, it started in 2009. This is the Phase One Plan, so the ones on the San Joaquin trib. And it was adopted in 2018. So that's basically nine years. But now it's, it's held up through litigation. So it's really not in effect until either the litigation is sorted through or hopefully we get a voluntary agreement placed.
I will tell you the one thing that you, one of the things that you said that I liked was if we're trying to keep the salmon population healthy, and the entire industry that's reliant upon it, as well as feed our own people, maybe doing it, doing a water release over weeks as opposed to months when the salmon are spawning or trying to get up there seems to make sense to me. So I will keep an open mind on that. But I also worked on South Bay issues. And that same water is used to flush out the South Bay. I used to live in Mountain View. We got frequent red tides that made breathing difficult when all the fish died in the, the bay. So there is a reason to have flows into the bay on that. So I hear what you're saying and I'll do more homework, but make sure that you also present why the environmental groups are where they are and that we're not just seeing one side. I'm well aware of what, what farmer studies are going to come out and their results are. So I'm not that stupid on that one. With that, are there more comments on this? This is sort of one of the things we have to do. We have another agenda item where the state is hoping to give us. I hope the state is giving us more money to work on recycled water, but we have to have this plan in place to be able to apply for those grants. Is that correct, Director Lim?
That is correct. Yes, the plan must be submitted to the state by July 1st, 2021.
Okay.
Yeah, Mayor, I would hold off comments on that actually until we get to that item 12. Just
Okay, no, no, I understand. I just, do we, do we, and we need to, we need to pass this tonight. This isn't a second reading. This is simply approve the plan tonight.
That is correct. And we are asking the council to adopt two separate resolutions, one for the Urban Water Management Plan and one for the Water Shortage Contingency Plan.
Okay. And does that have to be two separate motions? Yes, Joan, that's a yes or a no?
It is a no. You, you can, you can have one, you can have one motion, two resolutions.
Okay.
Unless, madam mayor, someone wants to vote differently. If, if someone wants to vote differently on one resolution or the other, then I would take them separately. But if anticipate that they will pass with full support of the council, both of them, we can take them together.
Thank you, Ms. Casman. Any other comments from council?
I'd like to move approval if you can send a message when you do it. Please, you have to advocate for us in addition to what you're reporting. This is problematic and we appreciate all your hard work and effort, but unless we start sending a message along with it, it's really not as helpful. Is that possible? Even if it's a footnote, for gosh sakes, come on.
Yeah, council member, we, we can definitely do that. Would you like us to bring this back on with that language? Okay, so just trust, trust that we will provide that Reno and that disconnect between housing production, water supply and infrastructure, most certainly.
And you might want to throw in if they want to pay for our water tanks, that'd be nice too. Thanks.
I would second that motion and I would echo the, the fact that we need this group. We need this group to help advocate for us. So we're relying on passing this and, and I will acknowledge in a second that this has been great work, but we need this group to help advocate for our water supply and everything that's being delegated to us from the housing and no infrastructure that is coming along with all of this.
I'm getting a message from above.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further
I think we have to close the public hearing first.
Oh, thank you. Ms. Casman, do I need a motion now to close the public hearing though?
Well, I thought I heard you close it, but, but yes, you should close the public hearing with a motion before you take a motion on this on the resolutions. I thought I
I am never going to get this right. Could I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Madam Mayor, you already did. I, I heard you close it. You're fine. Just take, take the vote on these actions.
Okay, any further discussion? I don't see any hands raised. I don't see anybody waving at me. All right, City Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Holibur?
Hi.
Councilmember Fun?
Hi.
Councilmember Pappan?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Leva?
Hi.
Mayor Snyder?
Hi.
The city council adopted the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan and the 2020 Water Shortage Contingency Plan by the 5 to 0.
Thank you, City Clerk. Congratulations, Public Works Lim, Public Works Director Lim and Ms. Andre. I lost your name in front of me. Okay, moving on to existing business. This is res, item number 12, Resolution Authorizing the Filing of a Planning Grant with the State Water Resources Control Board and the Recycled Water Project authorizing the city manager to execute all funding agreements and approving a contract amendment with West Yost Associates in the amount of $157,000. And this is an action item. City Manager, do you have a presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Keelam, our Public Works Director, will provide a quick presentation to the city council.
Thank you, City Manager Williams, and good evening again, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. This is a perfect timing following adoption of the Urban Water Management Plan and the Water Shortage Contingency Plan. And now we are talking some of the, some of the nicer projects, our recycle water projects. So tonight we have in front of you for you to adopt a resolution. The resolution, we've seen the resolution we adopted in October of 2020. In that resolution, the city council authorized the city manager to file an application with the state. The state board for $75,000 in planning grant to continue in the planning efforts of the Millbury Recycle Water Project. So after our initial, a couple of meetings with the state representative, we will tell more money will become available in the next fiscal year, which is beginning in July 1st, 2021. And Millbury, in state of $75,000, Millbury will be eligible to receive up to $150,000 in planning grant from the state to continue with our planning effort. And one of the requirement of the planning grant is that it require a 50% match. So Millbury would have to contribute at least $150,000 to the $150,000 planning grant from the state. And with that, I'd like to introduce our engineer from West Yost and associate, Ms. Catherine Geese. Ms. Geese has been helping us for several years now in the recycle water project. So with that, I'd like to introduce you, Catherine, and I will share your presentation material.
Thank you, Key, and good evening, Madam Mayor and council. So yeah, I'm here tonight to just give you guys a little bit of overview of the work that's been done with respect to recycled water planning and the feasibility studies to date, and then a projection of where we're going from here. Next slide, please. So in 2019, West Yost worked with the city to complete recycled water treatment feasibility analysis. And that work was really focused on the treatment plan itself. And the question being asked was, you know, is there space, really space to upgrade our treatment plant to tertiary out at the existing site? And what would that cost in order to be able to produce that water? We completed that analysis. And basically, the final conclusion was for, at a cost of about $3.60 per 100 cubic feet, you could produce tertiary treated recycled water and that would be at a rate of about 2 million gallons per day. However, I caveat that none of that work really looked at the infrastructure or the backbone associated with distribution of the recycled water. So that cost doesn't include any of that infrastructure. So in 2020, back in October, as Key was saying, we, the council was asked to, again, authorize another study to take a look more deeper into the recycle water program and determine who the recycle water customer base be, what would the distribution system look like? And ultimately, what would the whole package be? And then part of that work was also to secure $75,000 in planning grant funding, which would basically be matched by the city to complete that study. So the, the total scope of that effort was about $150,000 study. Now here we are in 2021 and we're back. And as Key mentioned, that's because as part of the work that we've done as part of the 2020 analysis, the state informed us that they're going to increase the amount available for funding. And basically, we also identified as during some of that initial work, some opportunities that we thought would be worth looking at. So we're here today to present a little bit overview of what that new scope is and then also get authorization for that expansion of funding. Next slide. So the 2020 study that was completed, basically, we concluded the current flows of the treatment plan are about 1.3 to 1.4 million gallons per day, and that's during the dry weather period. So when the recycled water demands would be the highest. And when we took a look at all the recycled water customers within the city, and those would be primarily irrigation sites, larger irrigation sites. And we determined that if you summed all of those up, it would be about 50% of what the flow coming into the plant. So the existing customer base or the potential customer base can use about 50% of the water that's, would potentially be available. But even within that, there's probably some sites within the city that are pretty isolated. It would be pretty expensive to deliver water all the way to them. So even out of that 50%, only a percentage of that probably really makes sense as part of a recycled water program. And so as a result, we just began talking with Key and others at the city about, well, maybe there's some other regional partners that would be interested in some of this water, you know, where adjacent to the highway, there's the airport, there's obviously cities right north and south of us, all that could maybe benefit from a program. And so we started throwing that idea around. And right around that same time was when we met with the planning grant folks over at SRF and they indicated to us that there's actually now this $150,000 available. So we said, hey, great idea. Maybe we have an opportunity here to expand our scope, look at some of these regional options and use that money to do that. Next slide, please. So Key asked us to prepare a revised proposal to amend the, the feasibility study, which would involve us revising the granny, planning grant application itself to, to ask for the entire $150,000. And then to prepare that more comprehensive study. And the more comprehensive study is really focused on expanding our scope to not just look at users within the city, but also some recycled water partnerships with adjacent agencies. And then maybe ultimately looking at what a regional recycled water system could look like and what some of the benefits associated with that. The other thing that we're going to be doing is taking a deeper dive into the treatment plan itself. Taking a look at some of the, the nuances of how you could do that upgrade, how it could be done in a way that best suits the city and sets you up for long-term nutrient removal if you need to go there. And then also really what's the optimum sizing and layout and everything for those facilities, given the actual recycled water demands. And so ultimately, what'll come out of this work is a recycled water feasibility study report. That report will follow the guidelines of the state water board recycled water funding program. And that will serve the basis for future construction grant funding. So not only are we completing all this analysis, but we're also setting the stage that the city's prepared then to go ideally go out and get some construction grants to pay for a lot of this infrastructure. Next slide. In terms of regional partnerships, like we said, there's probably about In terms of regional partnerships, like we said, there's probably about 500,000 gallons or more of water available a day for outside users. And then I don't need to tell you about the water supply reliability issues on the peninsula. I think you've heard enough of that tonight. But the other driver, regional driver for this that is really important to understand is that, you know, I'm sure you all have heard about the nutrient limits in the San Francisco Bay, and and those are coming. Well, what we're likely to see with those limits are what are called load-based limits or load caps. And what that means is you can't discharge any more nutrient than what you have historically discharged. So any amount of recycled water that you take out of the bay and you use for irrigation or some other purpose is going to reduce your load and then effectively puts you way below those load caps, allowing the city to grow without even needing to upgrade the plant for nutrient removal. So looking at a regional program, maybe there's a mutual benefit here where, as a partnership, several agencies could reduce the overall loads to the bay, help meet some of their water supply reliability issues, and ultimately, all of this will help the city pay for the infrastructure you guys need to be able to implement all these great benefits for the city itself. Next slide. With, in terms of the recycled water funding support task that'll be included in this scope of work, it's pretty similar to what we had before. But now we need to, again, modify the planning grant to get that $150,000 in funding. We're going to also be looking for opportunities for construction grants and loans. And so some of the new funding that ideally is coming out of the federal government and even out of the state for some of the things that have been announced recently. Trying to identify what those opportunities are, making sure the city's well-positioned those, and then ultimately initiating those applications for those construction grants. So you can roll right from the planning stage into that construction phase. And so tonight, to complete the planning grant application, this council must adopt the new resolution to authorize the city manager to file an application for the new grant request. And with that, we'll be able to push that forward. And once that grant comes through, we'll be able to initiate the work. With that, I'll pass it over to Key, and he'll give you guys a little summary of the overall timeline.
Great, thank you, Catherine. So this slide would show the tentative schedule for the recycle water project. So we would like to start continuing with the feasibility study in mid to sometime in mid 2021. Like we mentioned before, the funding will become available after July 1st, 2021. And we are, we cannot be expanding any of the grant fund until the funding agreement is fully executed. So we will, we will expectations execute the funding agreement once we receive that from the state sometime in July. And then once we start the feasibility study, we think it will take about 12 months to complete the study. That'll be sometime in late 2022, we'll be submit a construction funding application. What we are looking at currently is California SRF State Revolving Fund, either a loan or a grant, and also potentially getting in touch with We Fear to get funding to FEDs EPA in Washington DC. And then once we could, it would take us almost a year to two years or so to work on those funding applications concurrently. At the same time, we'll be developing the design document from mid 2023 to early 2024. It will take approximately 18 months to complete the document, including the permitting process. And then hopefully, everything else in place come 2025, we'll be embarking on the construction of the recycle water facility in Millbury. And it will take around two years to complete the project. And the next slide is a map that I'd like to show. This is a pipeline conveyance system. The little star here is the Millbury Water Pollution Control Plan, also the treatment plan. And we have a couple pipeline segment that is under construction or under obligation by current developments. And the purple line does our planning project currently in the pipeline, some of the large-scale mixed-use development project in Millbury. And they will be on the hook to continue to contribute funding to build out the conveyance system. Or they will be building it themselves. And City Manager Williams and myself, we have been also working with our state senate office about trying to secure some state funding, putting in some pipeline for recycle water project to bring recycle water into Green Hills Country Club. So this is sort of give you an idea of the skeleton network system that we have in mind for the same. With that, I would that will conclude the staff report, and I am glad to answer any question that the council may have.
Thank you, Public Works Director Lim. I see Vice Mayor Leva. Please go ahead.
Yes, I'm in full support of this project and going for whatever funding we can achieve. But I have a question. This is kind of an out-of-box question. It says to construct facilities. What does that mean? What what facility, what what would that entail? And how big is it? And what does that mean?
Would you like to answer that, Catherine, or you like me to?
Sure, I'd be happy to answer it. So a big part of the construction would be the upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant itself. So in order to produce the water quality required for recycled water, the plant would have to provide filtration and then advanced disinfection to produce what we call disinfected tertiary recycled water. And then beyond that, it would be whatever infrastructure isn't already being constructed. So Key had kind of indicated there's some pipelines and things that are already being done. Well, there could be additional things, probably a pump station, tank, stuff like that, the whole backbone of the distribution system itself. But the, probably the bulk of the cost would, and and new facilities would be at the treatment plant.
So not an actual facility as, like, it would be a pump station, not an actual facility that people would have to man?
Well, the, I mean, no, not nothing. I mean, any, anything that would have to be manned would be at the treatment plant, which would already be. Yeah, exactly.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
Sorry. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other questions? A couple of quick questions.
Mayor, sorry, I can't.
Please go ahead, city manager.
For the record, though, it may require one or two more FTEs when we get there, you know, for this recycled water, because there's testing and maintenance and that type. So I just want to get on the record that, you know, five years from now, if you say, well, I thought you weren't going to hire him, we probably will have to hire one or two FTEs for this.
Yeah, I wasn't looking toward, sorry, just to clear it, I wasn't looking for a lack of hiring. I just wanted to know how large the facility would be.
Yeah, I totally understand. Sorry, just want to.
Ms. Geis, if I pronounce that correctly, I'm glad you mentioned SFO, because that's what I was thinking of in Caltrans. We have also, if you're looking at where the governor is allocating money, he's talking, and the state agencies are talking a lot about habitat restoration. So you're probably familiar with that big seasonal wetland that runs from High Line Canal, kind of all the way up to San Bruno. That's a potential, where I look at that, and I can't believe we actually call that habitat, because it's so denuded out there. So there seems to be a lot of emphasis on habitat restoration. We have other canals that likely could become customers. I'm trying to find people who might actually pay us for this. So maybe San Bruno, maybe SFPUC, maybe SFO for their mitigation, because that wetland area and those endangered species are what they had to do to build and expand the airport. That would be great on that. I have also been looking at some old maps for a historical project. And USGS base maps from 1885 include lakes in Millbury. Now, I doubt we can go back and adding the lakes. There used to be three of them. But maybe we can, and and I can hear someone else talking, if they could please mute themselves. I'm a little bit concerned that with sea level rise, we may have saltwater intrusion. So maybe we might want to use some of our own water to keep the flow of groundwater heading towards the bay to prevent that saltwater intrusion. My other dream, and this comes from trying to do noise mitigation work, if Caltrans and SFO admit that they have made us more noisy by all of their expansions over the decades, a rim of trees running along 101 would need to be watered. And my dream is that somebody else pays for the trees and somebody else pays for the water. But if it's our water, that's a win-win there on that. So consider that berm that is our one form of natural restoration. And I've been on so many conferences the last couple of months on natural or nature-based restoration. Just consider those when you do the feasibility study. I I couldn't be more excited with this. So congratulations.
Ideas. Yeah, absolutely. That's that's some great input. Thank you.
And thank you. Anything else from council? I haven't opened it up to the public. My apologies. Any any comments from the public? Comments or questions? I'm not seeing hands raised. City clerk, do you have anybody on the phone? Okay, with that closing public comment, may I have any further comment? A motion to approve?
Of approval?
Thank you, Mr. Hollibur. Thank, is that Mr. Fung?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman Fung.
So there's a couple of comments I'd like to make, I can.
Okay, thank you. Please go ahead.
So in terms of the recycle water, I think this is absolutely critical for us, especially given what we have been listening all night about the expectation of drought coming to basically shortages of water. Since we have a lot of development in town that is coming in, a lot of them are relatively large in terms of size, both mixed-use as well as residential. Having the, you know, any sort of a regulation to make sure that when they're doing construction, to use recycle water as much as possible, whether it be cleaning up their job site or irrigation system for the landscaping, or even looking into legislation, putting in dual plumbing for them to use recycle water. Somebody, you know, plumbing fixtures, whether it's one of the urinal and that sort of thing. I think we need to take a really hard look at this and really take proactive action in ensuring that we do everything we can to conserve the usage of water and leverage use of these recycle water as much as possible. What was the expectation in terms of reclaim water in terms of annual volume, Catherine?
Oh, well, annual volume, so is that, I don't have, I'm sorry, I don't have the annual volume number. The the peak demand was about a half a million gallons a day.
Half a million a day?
Yeah.
So if I may, that versus what what can be produced, which I thought was like 1.5 MGD.
That's right, but versus 1.5 MGD. And that was looking at, you know, again, all the irrigation customers, plus considering dual plumbing and some of the new development and things along those lines as well.
Right. And so, you know, obviously, you know, Green Hill is likely to be one of our biggest water irrigation, right? They have an, you know, 18-hole golf course. Plus the fact that we have all these new units coming into our city. You know, we need to be a pioneer in terms of, you know, mandating the usage of these recycle reclaim lease for landscaping and construction purposes to an extent that makes sense to do, as well as putting into a plumbing so that we can use these things for, you know, somebody's plumbing fixtures, that does not to use portable water for those purposes. Those are some of the things that comes to my mind. And also, you know, working collaboratively with other jurisdictions in terms of planning effort and the pipeline, you know, development effort. I think this could really be a regional partnership opportunity here. You know, if I were to just even think outside the box a little bit, perhaps, you know, reclaim a reusable water district, you know, within a few jurisdiction, that would really be able to leverage the planning effort, the pipeline construction, and, you know, increase the amount of potential usages of it, you know, up and down to peninsula where we have so many new development projects. So I think there's a lot of room for using these recycled water here. So, Madam Mayor?
Thank you, Councilman Fung. Director Lim, I know we've got the maps, but it might help us in our discussions about high-speed rail to show that both TOD 1 and TOD 2 have purple pipe systems. And that, in fact, at the end, it brings the purple pipe at least from the west side of 101 up to Taco Bell. And if we could get that on our website and show that, there you are, show the public that we're working on this and why it's important that all new developments do just what Councilman Fung said, have, continue to extend that purple pipe as close to Green Hills as we can get it, and then to Mills High School, and then to Cappuccino as the three major fields, and then eventually to Central Park. So that would be a nice addition to the website if we can get that. Any other comments? Is there a motion to approve?
I already have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. We had Hollibur and Fung. My apologies. All right, city clerk, could you please call the vote?
Councilmember Hollibur?
Hi.
Ms. Tunnels?
Councilmember Fung?
Hi.
Councilmember Papin?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Leva?
Hi.
Mayor Snyder?
Hi.
By the vote five to zero, the city council adopted a resolution authorizing the filing of a planning grant in the amount of 150,000 with the state water resource control board, rescinding resolution 20-76 and approving a contract amendment with West Yost Associate in the amount of 157,000.
Excellent. And and city manager, you'll get a follow-up email from me. We might want to send an update, assuming we get the additional monies to Congresswoman Spear, so that she knows that we're getting closer and closer. So if some federal infrastructure money comes available, we're in a good position for that. So congratulations, staff and Ms. Great Geese on this. This is, this, I love this.
Yeah, I think, Mary, that, you know, the WFIUP program that was adopted in 2000, and was it Catherine, 2014?
I think that's right.
Which is that federal water infrastructure supply program is is on our radar. Absolutely, that that's, that could be our source of funds.
Excellent. Couldn't be, couldn't be happier. Thank you all for that. Last agenda item, we have the Millbury Recreation Center Design and Build Construction and Fundraising Update. This is an informational item and
Mayor, I'd like to introduce Jane Cow, our senior engineer and also our project manager. And I'd like to take this opportunity to also just quickly commend Jane. On what a great job that she's done on on managing this project for the city. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Jane Cow, our project manager.
Thank you, City Manager Williams. I'm going to share screen now. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. All right, is everybody seeing the the screen all right?
Looks great, Ms. Cow.
All right, thank you. Also, for tonight's agenda, we are giving a informational update on construction design schedule budget. And then the recreation director Brady will be given an update on fundraising. So construction update, I want to start with our monthly time lapse video. It's exciting to see how it progressed. So here we go, about 19 seconds. And this is right off the press, should be a, just this morning's that progress. All right. So in terms of construction update, the top picture here that you're seeing is the picture that I had presented back in April in our monthly update. As you can see here, steel construction was, you know, 20, 30% completed. The steel was done in the community room side as well. It's it's moving towards the lobby side. And this is a picture on below is a picture of this morning, what was completed today. So in May, we mostly completed the steel construction. On May 10th, steel was painted or it started, the painting started in May, apologize. And on May 12th, the first shipment of the cross laminated timber CLT panels were delivered on site. And then contractors started installing the panels early last week. And you can see how fast it progressed. They essentially finished with the CLT panels over the community room and it's moving towards the lobby, and it's getting close to completion there. And then, once they're done with the CLT panels on this first floor or second floor roof, they will be coming back to do the steel beam for the roof level here in the lobby. And then they will resume the CLT on top of that. The water line work was also just completed this week, so we're all good in terms of tying into the city's water supply. We are also planning a topping out ceremony for June 8th. So this ceremony is typically held when the last beam is installed. And that is to commemorate the completion of the building structure. So it's a really good milestone in in construction, in building construction. Now, this slide I'm going to show. a couple pictures. Here you go. So, this top picture is the crane that's being used to lift the CLT panels onto the roof. Here on this bottom picture, you can see the crane is lowering and getting into position to be installed. And here is a quick video that I took yesterday while on-site. Hopefully, it plays all right. As you can see, the crane moving the panel onto the location where it's being installed. And as you can see here, I know it's a little slow, but you know, the crane, it moves, right? The, the line, it moves quite a bit. So last week, due to high winds, we actually were not able to work on installing CLT panels due to the high winds. All right, couple more pictures here from yesterday, the progress on the community room side. As you can see here, from underneath now on ground level, looking back up at the structure, you can see all the painted CL, painted steel beams, and they painted this ahead of laying the CLT, just so it's more efficient. They don't have to lay the CLT and then mask the CLT and then paint the steel structure. And you can see here, I think we're missing one last panel here, and that was completed today. Here's looking from Laurel Parking Lot, you can see the community room and just how open and wide it is. So if you have time, let's come on-site and visit. It's actually really amazing to stand under this structure whilst it's open like this. And this last picture is the picture of the CLT panels. All right, so a couple more pictures here. This picture is from the interior, looking up at the ceiling and the painted steel in the community room. And this picture here is a picture of the ceiling looking up from the corridor adjacent to the community room. And then down here, we have what, it looks like an open pit, but it's actually graded for the bio-retention planter right outside of the community room terrace. All right, so design update. In terms of permit documents, the design team has been focused on revising plans set to address the building permit comments. Design team resubmitted the permit package for our Building Department Review last week on the 20th. The goal is to resolve all the outstanding comments so that the building permit can be issued prior to the completion of the structure of the building, which is slated to be completed in June. Some of these outstanding comments included mechanical and electrical as well as energy compliance. So these, there, there weren't any fatal flaws in terms of the design. These are just minor comments that needs to be worked out. And so we, we are diligently working with the Building Department to resolve these outstanding, outstanding comments to ensure that our building meets all applicable codes. And to kind of, you know, dial back a little bit. So, in this design-built project and this process, we're moving in phases, right? So the project received the foundation and the structure permit, and that's why they're able to be out there and, you know, build the structure. So now we're moving forward with the next step, which is to get the permit to build the exterior facade as well as the interior of the building. The design team is also work, also evaluating the different acoustical ceiling treatment for the project and selecting interior finishes. So in terms of the acoustical ceiling treatment, we're trying to balance between improvements to the sound inside the building, while also exposing and showing off that CLT panel that I just showed you in the previous pictures, which is really a, a nice architectural feature that we're not trying to hide. So we're balancing that as well as trying to avoid sprinkler system modification and increase costs that's related to that. The third bullet point here, site lighting. I spoke about this briefly last meeting, so the fixture that we have selected for the site lighting does not meet the current Title 24 requirements due to not having the auto dimming function. So we are working with the design team and looking at different options. So we'll be bringing back both, you know, the site lighting and the acoustical ceiling treatment, as well as selection of the interior finishes in the next, you know, month or two with our recommendation to council. Now here on the fourth bullet, we're continuing to work with Peninsula Clean Energy, PCE, on our EV chargers. We're working with their EV Ready team, and they provide free technical support on EV charging station design. So they've been very helpful, and they provided several design options for us. Some has cost impact, some does not, so we're working through and reviewing those options. Lastly, we are waiting for PCE, PCE to finalize the solar power purchase agreement program. Next up, we have schedule. So this is the same schedule that I had presented last week. Nothing has changed, so we're, you know, I'm happy to report that we're on schedule in that the exterior will be completed in the, the building structure will be completed in June, and the exterior will start right after that, and will, they'll work through December, and then interior will start in September through February, and the substantial completion still marching, grand opening is still June 2022. In terms of project budget, this is also a same slide that I've been showing through the last couple of updates. So, the design-built contract is $24.5 million, construction contingency. It's 6% of that, which is $1.47 million. And then we have about $2.25 million in scope that's outside of the design-built contract. Current budget snapshot. So, in terms of construction progress, we're about 40% complete. And in terms of design-built contract expenditure, we have expended 9.38 million of the 24.5 million. So we're have about 62% remaining. In terms of contingency, we have approved $668,000 worth of change order and of the 1.47 million, so we have 55% remaining. And then the Swinerton Project Management and Construction Management Contract, we've expended 682,000 of the 1.17 million dollars. And, and a reminder on that is that Swinerton's been on board way before the construction contract started because they helped us transition from the design bid-built to design-built. Now here is the change order summary. So I'm going to focus on things that's been added or changed since last update. So, in the approved change order section, one line has been added, which is kitchen equipment. So we have approved a change order of $138,000 for the procurement and installation of kitchen equipment. And this item is outside the project contingency. Basically, this was an item that was including the $450,000 additive alternate budget line item that's outside of the design-built scope. So I will elaborate a little bit more in the next slide. Under the pending slash change order, under review change order, I have crossed out the costs related to four weeks hazardous material remediation delay, the $44,000 cost there. And this is because the project is progressing on schedule, and it did not impact the critical path. So Swinerton has specialized schedule that only looks at and review and analyze schedules. So they've been reviewing block schedule. And what we found was that we were able to confirm that the four weeks of work, we were able to use the float in the schedule to complete this work, and therefore it did not impact the overall contract timeline as initially indicated. And so, the other big item that's been added to this section is the trash enclosure. So, most of this trash enclosure cost at 63,000 is for adding a roof to the trash enclosure as it, you know, requires structural upgrade. So what you're looking at is, you know, cost for structural steel and foundation as it relates to the roof. So right now, we are confirming whether the roof is actually needed. So we will bring back to council with an updated amount. If the roof is actually not needed, most of that amount will go away. There is a small portion of that cost that's for lighting, and staff is recommending installing lighting for, at the trash enclosure for the safety of staff and also renters of the community room for nighttime events. And then lastly, under the at-all-using contingency, as you recall, these were items that's been pulled out of the design-built contract, the stipulation just couldn't, they couldn't fit in the stipulated some. We had mentioned that we will use contingency funding to pay for these two items, get these installed. So we're just tracking the budget for that, and once we have true cost, we will update this. Here you go, the other project costs, and this is the same, same, same table that I had shown in April. The only change is that I have now crossed out kitchen appliances. So as I was saying that, we have now moved this to blocks contract as a change order. Originally, we had a budget of 150,000, that's under the $450,000 additive alternate budget that is outside the design-built contract. So, the reason why we decided to move this to blocks contract is because block is actually responsible for the design of it. So, if you look up in the two columns, two rows ahead, low voltage cabling and ER RCS systems. Both of these systems, we have a designer outside of the design-built contract designed it, and therefore we would bid out these scopes separately. But since the kitchen was actually designed by block and has gone through review and approval by the San Mateo County Health Department, there is also an ansel system, which is a fire protection system that needs to be installed with, in a commercial kitchen. There's a lot of coordination that's needed. So by having block complete the kitchen from start to finish, it really reduces the risk of installation, design and coordination coordination issues if the city, you know, were to take this and coordinate separately. And also in terms of meeting the stringent requirements of the county health department for commercial kitchens. And then other, under, the items under other design items, those been there, and the, the cost has not changed. And, and reminder of that is that these are kind of design changes that we are reviewing that might have cost impact, but has been not, has not been finalized. We are working with the designer to minimize these costs while still having the features that we want. So we'll be working through that, and as we get the design done and make the decision, we will come back to council with recommendations. That concludes my update, and we'll hand it over to Recreation Director Brady for an update on the fundraising.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. This is McKenzie Brady, Recreation Director. And thank you, Jane, for the rest of the Rec Center update. It's moving along swimmingly and very excited to see it all come to fruition. So as for the fundraising update, the fundraising planning has continued with the Campaign Steering Committee as well as the Recreation Subcommittee. The fundraising campaign brochure that was worked on by the Steering Committee and the Recreation Subcommittee has gone to the printer, and they are finalizing the final edits with that, and we'll be printing it this week, and that is a union printer as recommended by the Recreation Subcommittee. And we should have that by early next week at the latest. And as you can see here, there are a number of different columns with different numbers of gifts, gift ranges, and what this is, is the breakdown of how a fundraising campaign essentially works. So, lead gifts and major gifts are generally what is part of what's called the quiet phase of the capital campaign. So there are two overarching phases essentially for capital campaign, the quiet phase and the public phase. And so, lead gifts are supposed to account for about a third of the entire campaign fundraising goal. And then moving on, major gifts account for about 33% as well, you know, a third of the, the total goal. And then the public phase is the general community gifts, and so that's everything up to that $25,000 mark, also accounting for a third of the fundraising goal. And so, for our specific capital campaign, lead gifts are everything over $150,000. Major gifts is over $25,000, and then general community gifts, that public phase is, is the $25,000 amount. And so, this is all just, it's a working document. So for example, let's say that the, the Steering Committee is able to secure a $500,000 gift. They can add this in there, and then they're able to manipulate the, the numbers of potentially lower gifts and not necessarily need to receive as many of the smaller gifts. On, on the other side, if they're not able to receive a potentially $250,000 gift, that would move the numbers higher in the, the other columns. And so, at the end of the day, the number of gifts needed at each level, the prospects needed is double that, is what they're aiming for. And so the Steering Committee has been putting together a list of donor prospects for major gifts and for lead gifts. And if you're able to go to the next slide, please. As you can see here, this is part of their task list of the work that they are, are working on right now. So they're putting together that targeted cultivation of lead prospects, and they should be hopefully finalizing that this week or next week, and then also working on the volunteer training. And so there's, there's a smaller steering committee, and then there's a larger campaign fundraising committee. They would work on training that larger committee as well. And, and then as you can see here, where we hope to have the, the launch of the quiet phase of the campaign around June 8th would coincide with the topping out ceremony. We thought that that would be a nice timeframe for that. They're also working on, they would be then soliciting the leadership gifts. So that's everything over the $150,000 amount, most likely through the beginning of September. Also during this timeframe, they're working on the donor list for the major prospects, and so that's everything over the $25,000 amount. And they'll be working on that, putting together that list, the Steering Committee and the larger fundraising committee. And, and that list can come from brainstorming sessions within the Steering Committee themselves, or even other potential donors recommending, you know, other individuals that they spoke with, other entities, organizations, foundations, you know, passing along those names. And so that would hopefully be happening through the end of July. And then it's moving on to the major gift solicitation phase from August through December. And then, they are hoping to have a public launch event for the general community gifts coincide with Giving Tuesday, so happening in that November timeframe. And then from November, through the grand opening would be the timeframe for the general community solicitations, and that is the public phase of the campaign. And then, once the, the grand opening happens, there, there can also be a victory celebration for the campaign. And so, as, as I mentioned before, the Steering Committee has taken over the fundraising campaign. They'll definitely be checking in with staff regularly on the, the progress, and that is how staff will be able to continue to update the City Council.
Any questions?
And I would like to also know before, if, before you do ask any questions, the, the Steering Committee, who that is made up of. So that is made up of Janet Fogarty, Fogarty, part of Millbury Community Foundation. We have Julie Turner, who is the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission. Stephanie Douglas, who is part of the Parks and Recreation Commission. Robert Gotchak, who is part of Sister Cities and Rotary. Joe Teresi, who is also part of the Rotary, as well as Wayne Lee and Marion Kong. Don't believe I missed anybody there.
Mayor, I think you're on mute. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cow. Thank you, Ms. McBrady for that, and to all of the volunteers on the fundraising committee. Thank you for your time you've already given and all the time you will be given for that. We very much appreciate it. Comments? I see Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I was just curious, when would they be trying to fulfill that working document?
It, it will be constantly just a work in progress as they are going through. So that's, that's a starting point, and so they can be focusing on those different amounts. And the, the lead gifts is the, the starting point. So if they are able to receive a larger gift, then they're able to manipulate the lower gift amount to where they, they are needing to necessarily focus on so many of those, if that makes sense.
Well, that makes sense. Of course, you want to go from the top, but I'm just the strategic, I, I'm just not following the strategy that well, but I'm not in the group, so I'll, I'll refrain from comments on that.
Councilman Hollibur?
All right, thank you for all of
All right. Thank you for all the hard work on this. Great to see progress on the structure coming much every day. And a few questions. What was on the budget, just in general? With my understanding that the financing would largely come from borrowing against the water fund, water and possibly as sewer fund. Do, has that started yet? Or do we anticipate any time when we'll have to tap into those funds? No pun intended.
No, that's a great question. No, we have not drawn down on those funds yet. And we are planning on bringing that to the City Council here in the next either the June 8th meeting or the second meeting in June to request that we start drawing down on those loan funds and taking action. We are anticipating not having to use as much as we had, we had originally brought to the City Council, but we will, Councilmember Oliver and the Council overall be bringing that to the Council shortly.
And then I was a little surprised to see the trash enclosure change order listed. I thought that had been included as, you know, covered as part of the base bid that was made by the design build team. And you mentioned some of the issues that may need a roof and lighting. Also mentioned steel, which seems pretty excessive for a trash enclosure. Hoping maybe we could do something a little bit more economical if we can. If that'll work.
Yeah, I can elaborate on that. So the base bid included essentially chink chain link fence and a concrete pad for which is pretty typical. And it's going to be within the parks corporate yard, the parks yard. So you don't really see it from, from the building.
I thought it was off of Lincoln.
No, we hadn't moved that just because apologize, I can't remember why right now. But Tom, do you remember, City Manager Williams, do you remember why we had moved that?
Yeah, I do. As we're going through the site design and then the floor plan, it was due to just the the length of the trash enclosure that Group Four had on the very northwest portion of the site and just the distance of travel was very long. And so we moved it to our, our property where the where the park maintenance buildings are. Better access, easier to 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 travel.
The original location was planned because it was immediately adjacent to the large community room. That would be the best access.
Well, no. Okay. So originally, originally it was had to be down at the bottom of the slope on the sidewalk on Lincoln Circle. And there was a significant retaining wall and costs associated with the trash enclosure. And then also the trash enclosure was right in front of the northern elevation. So it really blocked the view of the new building. So you'd see trash enclosure off Lincoln Circle, big retaining wall, and then, and then the building. And so very early on, I recollect that it was moved and that was moved to the very northeast corner. Where you have to go from the community room down the path through the parking lot to access it.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. I mean, I'm on the Subcommittee. This is the first I've heard of that. It's like we had it next to the kitchen. No retaining wall was mentioned, no nothing. I mean, I'm with Councilmember Oliver here. This is all new and I have no idea where this is coming from.
If I can follow up on this, I do remember the retaining wall. This is news to me, however, and I love garbage. But having it on Lincoln Circle does mean that that's what people are going to see of the building, not this lovely new building. So I can understand the move. My concerns, Ms. Cow, is we're in a very windy area, even a three yard bin with heavy plastic lids can blow up in the wind. I know they can be locked down, but people forget to lock them. And that throws litter up everywhere and it pre the vectors will come, the raccoons, the seagulls, et cetera, will come. So you know, given that we have plans for other parts of the park, if we can get other things funded, I can see doing something simple. But I have to tell you, a garbage enclosure can be a real eyesore. But look at the one that Trader Joe's and Living Spaces put in. That one, you don't even notice there because it is that nice looking. And if we could, please call it a zero waste place. If it's trash, it's more than trash. You're going to have recyclables there. You're going to have reusables there. You might have the new SB 1383 rules for a place to pick up reusable food. I'm not quite sure how that'll work. But that goes into place next year, that law.
Madam Mayor, I just need clarification here. So where, how is the trash going to get from the community room to where you're saying this is over by the courtyard? So you're going to drag it all through the building? I mean, I'm not understanding where it is. This just doesn't make sense anymore.
Hey, Jane, maybe it would help if you brought up a site plan and were able to visually see it.
Certainly. Councilman Oliver, sorry if we cut you off with your comments. Go ahead, Jane.
Yes, give me a second. I'm going to screen share, pull it up. Thank you.
The only other idea on it on an open enclosed trash enclosure is if you leave it open like that, it's going to get illegally dumped in. You know, just chucking it over happens at the library because of the, of no no roof on the library.
A couple of that. And also we've got clean water mandates that we have to abide by.
I understand, you know, the need for a roof and why you might want to do something a little bit nicer than a chain link fence. But maybe there's something in between a chain link fence and a steel structure, maybe like a cinder block structure or a sheet metal structure or something. Just that doesn't cost $63,000.
Or add it to the fundraising wishlist?
I do apologize for taking too long. My computer is a little laggy with the big file. All right, I'm going to pull that up right now. So this is the site plan. So originally, the trash enclosure was going to be in this area along the hillside. So there would be retaining wall required to kind of keep the soil out. Now the trash enclosure is actually moved right here. It's completely, it's mostly concealed by trees. And it's chain link here. It's actually chain link fence around the courtyard right now, the maintenance yard. So essentially, it's just what, it's just blends back into the existing environment of the park maintenance yard. And there was a question about how trash will be moved from here to here. So we are providing a temporary trash enclosure right at, right up here. Hopefully you can see that in this little area. It'll be, it'll look nice. It'll be slightly fenced off. For a large event, the trash will actually just be dumped out here. And then we will be providing carts to the maintenance staff to cart out any trash to this new location.
Yeah.
Does it go around the building? Or through the building?
Yeah, essentially, they can either go through or around. Around is probably cleaner. And we, and it will be done after the event. It was never meant to be something that you drag across the building during an event. That's why there's a temporary holding location.
And so that temporary holding location is perhaps Councilmember Oliver, what you were recollecting, because that was always it's temporary, but it's permanent, right? Temporary for the trash for the evening. And then move it to when we work with, with our trash hauler, South City Scavenger. This is the large bin for, for trash hauling. This, this is the one here where Jane's cursor is that was, you can't see it on the screen. It's way to the far left. If you recall. What was the original location?
Now, I beg to differ.
Yeah.
I don't believe it wasn't, it was attached to the building.
I will bring back.
It was like a driveway.
Yeah. I mean, this is just begging for disaster here. You're going to either have trash coming through the building. You don't even have a pathway there on the other side where you have the temporary. This is not well thought out. I'm sorry. You're better off putting a little pathway on the Lincoln Circle side so that it can be picked up and dropped off there.
There, there is, there is, there is a sidewalk. There is a pathway. But Jane, if you can bring this back to the original Group Four's location, it's, we can still move it. If that's the direction of the council.
I mean, I understand the point about the retaining wall and, you know, if, if that would be required off of Lincoln, then it's probably not worth it. But so I mean, I'm okay with the location where it's presented now, but you know, I would rather not have to spend $63,000, $63,000 to do it. Just as well keep the chain link fence or maybe look at other more economical type of shed like structures instead of a steel structure that requires a foundation.
Understood. We will look.
We will certainly go back and look at that. But again, I think, you know, we've always had this trash enclosure here behind the kitchen. And then the larger trash enclosure for the entire center was, like I said, off of the parking lot in the northwest corner. We can locate it there. I just, I don't think we're going to save any money.
I think we need to talk to South City Scavengers and try to do this a more efficient way. I agree with the temporary location behind the kitchen there, but to then haul it all the way back across or through the building makes no sense. So we have to work out that detail.
City Manager. I don't know how big that space is, but because I'm the one responsible for cleaning up most of the lion's crab feeds. I usually order four or five different carts, so 90 gallon carts for food waste. Because it's really heavy trying to pick up garbage cans and dumping them over the edge of a three yard bin. We've done that. And then another couple, sometimes as many as four or five for cans and bottles. Now, if we're renting this venue out as a wedding, maybe they're not going to have, maybe it won't be as wasteful as a crab feed where there's lots of crab pieces. There's just a lot of food waste there. Maybe we can sit down offline and figure out where these extra containers for big events might go. We're mandated to keep those organics out of the landfill. It's got to be out of the garbage can. And the best way to do it is with a wheeled cart. So I'm happy to use my professional background to help us with this. But I'm not on the Recreation Subcommittee.
Well, my recommendation, let's go back, talk with the architect, South City Scavenger, sharpen our pencil, and then, and then bring this back to the City Council.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't mean to spend so much time on this.
With a final recommendation. And then we'll find out what the cost benefit is of each of those. So then you can make a good conscious decision on, on where we spend our money on this. But I do agree with you. I think it is expensive and we can sharpen our pencil for sure.
Okay. Other comments? The kitchen equipment is now listed under ad alternate. Sorry, as an approved change order, which I think makes sense. Given everything that you stated about the, it sounds like everything in the kitchen kind of has to be installed at about the same time. It all has to go together. So now that that is an approved change order, does that reduce the fundraising goal? Because I believe that I thought that was previously in the fundraising goal of 1.75 million?
No, that's still part of the objective for the fundraising goal to offset that cost. The for the kitchen equipment.
But wouldn't it be covered now by contingency?
Well, it's a, that's a great question. The 1.7 is not a shortfall of the project. It's a fundraising goal to try to offset our costs for the project because the project is fully funded. But the more that we can fundraise, then the less reliance we have on our loan between the water enterprise and sewer enterprise.
All right. And then in terms of the fundraising levels, the page seven, the last page of the lists under the different levels of lead gifts and the major gifts, some specific items that are to be fundraised. Can you explain that?
I believe that that was a mistake with the status of the spreadsheet. It should not say public art or or the specimen trees either.
So those aren't necessarily the highest priority.
Correct. So the first column should only say lead gifts, major gifts and the the community gifts. So that is a mistake. My apologies.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver. Other council members? Couple of questions then. One, I had sent a potential funding or donation from Fire Clay Tile. They're a San Francisco based Bay Area manufacturer of tile. And they were interested in donating tile to the project. Have we been able to make any connection with them? And that would be tile for the bathroom and or kitchen?
Mayor, yes. We are in discussion with them and they have agreed to donate accent tile for the lobby walls.
Okay, excellent. Are we getting their recycled content tile? It just will help in our green status.
We have not selected tiles, so we will be working with our architect as well with Fire Clay on the selection.
Excellent. I'm glad to hear that. And then Mackenzie. I know when I talk to the various youth groups, I talk about them being, you know, donating. I know the Leos have already donated five or are going to be donating at least $500, kind of earmarked for the teen room. But it doesn't look like those little donations would get noticed that way. How should we be telling groups that can't afford $2,500 and greater to donate? Even if that is, I think I'm on the same place as the Vice Mayor. We're not asking people for little donations until November. But a lot of our groups have been trying to get ready to fundraise for the last couple of years.
Yes, Mayor. Just, just because the Steering Committee is not going to be focusing on those smaller donations until a later timeframe, that does not mean that the donations will not be accepted. So the website will be ready to go. The Community Foundation will be accepting all of those donations and anything over the $500 mark will be recognized on the donor wall.
Anything over. But we're not then going to, I know we had a problem with naming rooms. So in the future, we'll say, oh, you know, go down the hallway, look for the teen room, go down and look for the seniors room. Is that what we're going to be calling the rooms? In the old days, we called it the room with the fireplace. You know, how is all that working?
Correct. So those room names have not been finalized yet, but they will be something along those lines, generic names, the game room, the fitness and wellness room. First four conference room, unless the council desires different types of naming.
Okay, the, when we went on the tour and we went to that granted, very lovely recreation center in Palo Alto. And we went to the teen room, there was a little plaque there that said, thank you to a number of youth groups who did fundraising for it. It's a good way to trade, kind of show our young people how important their individual actions or group actions can be. But our plan then is to put any youth group donations onto the main donor wall as opposed to inside a particular room?
Correct. Yes. That has been the direction of the Recreation Subcommittee at this point is to recognize the donations over $500 on the donor wall. But any, any other desire can be taken to the Recreation Subcommittee and brought to the larger City Council for review and approval.
Okay, I'm not sure that they, for example, the Leos would care one way or the other. I will ask them. But I just, I guess I had been thinking there'd be a little plaque in the team room, recognizing all of our youth groups who donated. And that would encourage the other youth groups to be fundraising. So I guess was in a different place. Thank you. Councilman Fung, and then we'll open it up to the public.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, you know, come in and thank the staff, especially our project manager and Jane for working and keeping us on schedule. And so as to the and keeping us on schedule. And so as to the, um, the house map revision delay doesn't become, you know, a cost and for us. So thank you very much for doing that. Uh, I know it takes work to keep us on track and you guys have done a wonderful job. Thank you very much. Um, and if you can go into just a, you know, bit of an overview on the unforeseen installation for the sixteen thousand dollars, what that is? Just briefly.
Uh, apologies. Which, which one, Councilman Fung?
Uh, what's that page number here? Page five or seven. It's, uh, sixteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
I see. And reroute. Uh, essentially what happened is they, uh, encounter a, a concrete pipe that, uh, ended up resulting in uh, the sewer installation, uh, uh, unforeseen issue with rerouting and re, uh, re, regrading the, the sewer pipeline. And there is, and in terms of the reroute, uh, we, we routed the sewer line so that the sewer line did not connect directly to the old sewer line. Um, and instead it's a completely new line all the way to the sewer manhole. Those are two items that adds up to seventeen thousand dollars.
Wait a minute. So this is already done? Isn't, I mean, the slab is already poured?
I know this, well, it's, it's constructed, uh, and this is on site, not within the building. So this is site work. Uh, so we are reviewing the costs and negotiating with them on, on, uh, on these two items.
Let me just try to understand. So this is not within the building footprints? This is outside of building footprints? It's between the building and the manhole?
Correct.
Yeah, so I'm not understanding it completely. So the work is not done yet, or is it done?
Has been completed.
It has already been completed?
Yes.
I see. Okay. So the cost is already there?
The cost is there. It's just reviewing and ensuring that the cost that's been presented to us is, um, valid and it's something that the city ship are responsible for.
So you have the previous expectation as to where the line should have been and coming out of the building envelope and connecting to it? And you found out that it was not the same?
Uh, in terms of the concrete pipe, it was a concrete pipe that's not, that we did not know about that's existing. So essentially there is work to work around and, uh, redesign and remove the, uh, concrete pipe. So that's a cost there. And in terms of the reroute, the, uh, construction, the design-built co- contract included, um, and installation of the main to an existing cleanout that's in the parking lot that ties into a older sewer line. Uh, so as the project progressed, we looked into rerouting that sewer line so that it can go directly into a manhole with a brand new, uh, with brand new pipes instead of tying into something that's old.
I see. And then the old pipes or the clay pipes that?
Most likely, yes, yes. And that's within the Laurel parking lot.
Okay, well, I think you're not just back. You probably thank this effort. It's okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, if there's nothing, no other comments from council at this point, open it up to public comment. Uh, Mr. Lee?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and rest, and the city council. Um, the Lion Club, uh, has been under the impression that, uh, we would be able to fundraise for, uh, naming rights to a room. Um, and we believe that that is probably one of the best ways to generate interest in large, um, donation amounts um, over a hundred thousand dollars. And I understand there is some discussion to, to do away with that. I would highly encourage you not to, um, and I, as, and I think that, uh, a lot of, uh, organizations would have more motivation to raise, to work harder to raise money for, uh, the, uh, um, community center. Not that the Lions Club would not try to raise money for the community center, but I think it would give them extra incentive. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Lions President Wayne Lee. Okay, uh, this is an informational item, so we're not voting on anything. Any, do Jane or Mackenzie, do you need anything from us? Oh, I'm sorry, Janet Fogarty. Ms. Fogarty, please. Former Mayor Fogarty.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, actually, the, the, um, committee that's working on the fundraising is made up of several of us former mayors. Uh, because, uh, we, we just care about this community just as you all do. Uh, I, I just wanted to echo what former mayor, uh, Wayne Lee has, has just, uh, said. Uh, when we are asking people to make large-scale donations, uh, they, they they are much more interested in doing so if there's an opportunity for recognition for them. And so I would, uh, ask that, uh, this also be considered as, um, losing an opportunity for potential large-scale investment in this community center if we can't offer them, uh, recognition other than uh, on a donor wall. Now, the donor wall is good for, for most of the donors we're going to get. But as you saw from, uh, Mackenzie's, uh, chart there, uh, we need far fewer large investors. Uh, and we'll get far more small investors. Uh, and that's just the way of fundraising. So, uh, I'd just like to, uh, uh, echo what, uh, former mayor Wayne Lee said is that our job would be uh, a lot easier if we could offer large-scale uh, donors, uh, some, some significant recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Ms. Fogarty. Uh, Ms. Papen. Uh, actually, just to follow format, if I don't see any other hands up from the public, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you. I'm so sorry that it's like, kind of come down to this. I mean, this is a community benefit. And we're all gathering and to, we wanted to try to avoid this, you know. I'm gonna get my name on this. I'm gonna get my name on that. We're trying to bring the community together as a whole. I mean, if at some point in time we actually get to a point where recognition would be given for a specific group or a specific individual, um, we may get there. But we have to come together as a community and not, you know, hey, the Leos are gonna, every, I mean, this is about bringing the community together, not, um, pitting groups against one another here. I really hope that we can see the common goal. Uh, as you look at the hospitals that have donor walls and, I mean, we have very generous giving communities. And to ask, as some people have tonight, that specific set-asides happen. I mean, this is the kind of thing we were trying to avoid, keep the focus on the recreation center and move forward about bringing everybody together and, um, just the common goal to get this project finished. So instead of being distracted at this point in time, I think we need to really reach out to businesses, communities, um, everything. And it's, it's specific how we have presented it now. So again, in the future, we may come to some understanding or want to do some recognition and that would be the council as a whole or the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, I see no further comments. Uh, Ms. Cow and Ms. Mackenzie and staff, thank you for this. Thank you for all the work. It's been exciting watching the roof go up. I encourage the public, come on down and take a look. But if you want a tour, who should they contact since Ms. Cow brought it up? City manager, should we ask you so that nobody's wandering on site without a hard hat?
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, let me know and we'll set up, um, vests and hard hats and, and a tour, but, but nobody walk on the site. Um, because it is a construction site, so go through us and we'll get you, we'll get you connected. But also June eighth, um, you'll be able to see it as well.
Very good. And I'm sorry, I'm going, it is ten twenty-two. We didn't do council comments. That's our last agenda item. Um, if we can just quickly go through updates so that we know what each other's working on and starting with, um, I'm sorry, Councilman Holibur, I always start with you. I can switch it around if you like, unless you're ready to go.
I think I'm ready to go. Um, let's see, the CCG, uh, congestion management and environmental quality committee met yesterday. Uh, we discussed the, um, countywide, uh, bicycle, uh, pedestrian plan. Um, I don't know if this has gone to BPAC yet, but at some point it'll go to the full CCG, uh, board for approval. Um, there are several, um, projects in Millbrae, uh, identified in the plan, including, um, the Millbrae Avenue, um, potential bike bridge of, or one-on-one, um, as well as, uh, Murchison Drive up to Skyline. Um, and Skyline here with two eighty, um, on ramps and off ramps among other locations. Um, just warning, not every project is going to be funded. There are several hundred million dollars worth of projects in the plan throughout the county. We're just one small city of twenty. But a lot of good information that hopefully will make us more competitive, uh, for grants in the future. Um, let's see, the County Library JPA Governing Board met last week. Um, we approved, uh, an enhancement to the summer learning program of about, uh, nine hundred thousand dollars. Um, so there will be, um, additional programming both in-person as well as virtual. And we're also, um, the library system is, is partnering with a number of the city parks and recreation departments, including Millbrae's, uh, is involved with that. So um, there should be more information coming out in coming weeks, uh, regarding some of, uh, programming. It's all very exciting. Um, that's all I have. I know the Sister Cities Commission meeting was canceled. The last two meetings were actually canceled. I think they're trying to do more outreach to the, um, contacts and the model before meeting as a, uh, full commission. Um, that's all I have. I was unable to attend the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting last week, so. Nothing else to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Fung?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, just a few things. I want to be real brief here. Um, that, the, the mayor, uh, a couple of weeks ago on regarding the fire subcommittee uh, in reviewing the existing contract we have with CCFD, and I think, um, you know, I think in general, you know, there's a lot of room for improvement here uh, in terms of our existing contract with the Central Fire District and also uh, the fact that we don't have any representation on their board. Uh, I think it's, uh, you know, it's something that we definitely look into and improve upon. Uh, we really should have a say at the table in terms of how these costs are being managed. Uh, and how, um, you know, what we should be doing and how we should be spending, uh, our, you know, our dollar. Uh, and make sure we get the best bang for our buck here. Um, so look forward to meeting with the mayor next week to continue that conversation. Uh, I think it's gonna be important as a lot of jurisdictions are negotiating that. I think, again, there's a lot of room for improvement here for, uh, our contract with CCFD. Um, held a United, uh, held a, a community event on May fifteen called Communities United and had a great turnout. I'm very proud of how Millbrae, uh, have come together and bring everybody to that event. Um, I'd like to, uh, thank, uh, our vice mayor, um, Annie Oliva for bringing Jack, uh, Jackie Spear into the program. Thank you so very much.
Didn't bring her. I invited her.
You invited her, yeah, absolutely. And, and also supporting us throughout the entire program is. And thank you so very much, Vice Mayor. Also thank Councilmember Gina Papen for supporting us throughout that event as well. Thank you so very much. And, uh, thank, uh, the entire Holibur family for supporting us. It's nice to see Richard there on that day for joining us. And all the volunteers who made this event possible. Um, I, I probably, if I have to name people, I'm going to miss a few names, uh, but I'd like to thank Anthony Liu, um, Billy Colina, um, former mayor Wayne Lee for helping put together our Millbrae portion of the event. Um, William Chan, who also spent a lot of time on it. Thank you very much for doing that. A lot of, uh, young volunteers, um, you know, I have names of grace, uh, helped out, Grace Yack has helped out, uh, Lilian Chang, um, Herman Pang, Freeman Pang, um, and just, you know, a lot of volunteers who helped put this event together. Um, many of our elected leaders throughout the entire county showed up. It was a great turnout. It's really nice to see everyone coming together on this. Um, also great to announce that I have an opportunity to work with our sheriff, Carlos Bolanos. And, uh, bringing together, instigating a new community liaison program. And our sheriff has committed to providing, um, a high-level sheriff's deputy to become the dedicated API liaison to our community, um, working with his office. That liaison, and when it's done, I will be bringing forward to have that presented on community and whole series of educational seminar. Um, and, uh, you know, doing outreach program with our API committees and looking forward to extending that program, you know, into helping other communities as well. So very encouraged and very pumped to have an opportunity to work with our sheriff and bring this to our community. And, uh, it's a, it's a valuable resource to keep our community safe. It's very important. So, um, what else? Uh, oh, another thing, speaking to a lot of downtown and there's a lot of interest in their, uh, as we are working on a reopening effort, knowing that there will be some announced on June fifteen as to how to reopen our economy and, uh, loosen up some of the uh, current social distancing restrictions. Uh, we should look into a resolution to extend some of the current parklets for our restaurant owners. Um, a lot of people are still struggling and we need to do everything we can to help them, um, you know, into economic vitality and protect their investment. Um, it's a good thing for, uh, Millbrae to continue to be able to, um, have these parklets um, available to our businesses. Uh, I think we should have enough, we should have a resolution to uh, at least extend these parklets for at least a year until such time we have a downtown redevelopment plan so that we have a clear direction as to how our downtown commercial district should look like moving forward. So those are just a few things I have updates for everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Fung. Uh, city manager has been waiting on what the governor is doing on the emergency resolution so that he can bring back a, uh, an agenda item to council about extending the parklets. Just kind of waiting until we get direction from the governor so that we don't have to keep, he doesn't, staff and Tom Williams don't have to keep coming back to us every time things may change at the governor's level. But my understanding is it will be going forwards and it's, it's an excellent point there. Um, Councilwoman Papen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Economic Vitality had an amazing briefing from Azan Faust, uh, from Sam Seda. And, um, we are doing a downtown business survey. So if you go into some businesses, please ask them if they have filled out the survey. Uh, it's a wonderful way. We're trying to bring the community together and hopefully establish some sort of a business association. Uh, tragically, our chamber was tragically absent during COVID. So I would like the council to put on the next agenda, uh, subcommittee to go forward with the Art and Wine Festival and have the city run it. Uh, it was recommended for maybe the benefit of the recreation center or even the downtown, but I think that's extremely important as we move forward here. So I hope that we can get that on the next agenda. Um, maybe we can also do a briefing. The West Side Subcommittee did meet and we are moving forward. So, uh, Councilmember Oliva and I, uh, we know we got some calls or, uh, questions about that tonight. Uh, we are moving forward as quickly as we can and will continue to do so. Uh, again, the transit agencies are all working on economic recovery to get people back on them. So Blue Ribbon Transit Committee Task Force met this week. Uh, MTC is meeting tomorrow and we are still working. Evidently Bart had an amazing weekend like they've ever had. MTC is meeting tomorrow and we are still working. Evidently, BART had an amazing weekend like they've never had since COVID. So people are thinking and trying to get back on transit in a safe manner and a more efficient manner. And then finally, sadly, I ask that we close in recognition of Dr. Giardone Gennaro, excuse me, Dr. Gennaro, who was the principal at Cappuccino High School, passed away. So to his wife Carol, and they were married for 60 years and four children, Virginia, Norman, Adeline and Annette. I asked that we please recognize him. He was the principal when I was there. And he will be greatly missed. He was a wonderful contributor to the community and many of us who attended Cappuccino. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor?
A lot of things have been touched upon. With that said, like the West Side Subcommittee, yes, we have been meeting and I think we made some, some good progress that I hope that we can report out very soon. Speaking of the SAL Board, we have a new chief, Christina Corpus. I hope that we'll be able to see her in person or on Zoom. Maybe we can get her introduced to, to our group. That was kind of cool. The HART Board is got a new ADU program that has been launched out and is now public to many cities. Our, we're hopefully going to be next in line and it will be like somewhat of, I guess, to put it in a simple term, over-the-counter permit for an ADU. And seniors I met with, they have they're very anxious to be meeting in person. They're ready to get out. They're all vaccinated in the group and they're hoping that they can meet very soon in person. And the rest, I thought the highlight of, of since last meeting was, of course, the rally that Millbrae participated in. And our Councilmember Fung was in charge and did a fantastic job in organizing our community for that. I too am looking forward to the Art and Wine Festival and I'm hoping that this group can put it together because people are really aching for healthy, good stuff. And I think it'd be a great opportunity for our downtown and our businesses to have some exposure. So I thank you very much. And yeah, it feels like we're back to business here.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, first Council of Cities in person is this coming Friday. And the Millbrae hosting of Council of Cities will be July 30th. So if you could all please put that on your calendar. The event is going to be down at the city's parking lot in back of Peter's Cafe. The Lions will be cooking food and we're working on the rest of the program, hopefully setting up the stage. And we are looking to try to get the Mill String Quartet, if they've been able to practice during COVID. And if not, some entertainment for our friends. And it will include a tour of the attendees to see what's happening at our TODs on that. MCAC, our Culture Arts Committee, had a presentation by Republic Urban and the artist who was chosen for the Harriet Tubman Art Installation on Harriet Tubman Way. City manager, that's going to come to city council or Mackenzie, if she's still with us? I think it's coming to city council. It's really amazing, the art piece that has been created for installation when the work there is in that, that area. The mayor's coordinating council is tomorrow morning at 8:30. We are bringing more people in. The request to community groups, if you're still listening, if you've got an event coming up, it is very helpful to City Clerk Elaine if you put your event in a flyer because then she posts that up on the city website and it has all the pertinent information for the public on that. The city manager and I met with the district directors of Kevin Mullin and Senator Becker to talk about high-speed rail and trying to get that moving so that more work can begin on the west side of the train station. I also met with Loriann Richardson, who is the CEO of the Chamber. They are back in business. They are back in the office. They were locked out of their building for a number of months. And she is planning on doing the Art and Wine Festival. City manager, we haven't fully touched base on some things. The one concern that is there is right now, everything is looking good. It looks like we can take our masks off, which means you can get a glass of wine or a bottle of water at the Art and Wine Festival and walk up and down. But if we go back to social distancing, having people wait in line, there's a, a set of new logistics to work out in that. But the city manager and the chamber will be meeting hopefully soon on that. So hopefully it will go possible. It will be smaller. There's an incredible amount of logistics for that event. But Loriann has already been reaching out to the various partners for that event. The I've been spending a great deal of my time attending a lot of state budgeting meetings and watching where the governor is allocating his funds. And this is bad news for Millbrae because a lot of the funds, whether they're environmental, which is what I'm more familiar with, to housing are being looked at for, under an equity lens. And the equity lens means typically low-income communities of color. And Millbrae does not qualify on that. I've had a conversation with Councilwoman Davina Hurt as the California Air Resources Board, trying to get help on air pollution issues. And she was being very honest with me, which I appreciate, that chances are we just don't qualify, even though we are impacted from many major transportation inputs of air pollution. So the term I would love for staff to start looking more at is how can we be a community of concern? And this actually came up on a workshop I was at this morning, which was for nature-based climate change solutions. And this is a problem throughout the Bay Area. If we want to do climate change actions, which could include moving a sewage treatment plant to a tertiary, but we don't qualify for the funding because we're not an equity community, it's going to be more difficult for us to find these fundings. And I chimed up on that at this, this climate event this morning and got several other people, several other elected officials from, from their cities around the Bay saying, yeah, the, the model being used for equity, we get it. We want to make sure that low-income people are cared for. We saw the weaknesses under COVID. But we still have needs for funding too. And I, I don't know if that comes up at MTC, Gina. I'm still struggling with how to, how to get us better defined so that we're in the position to get these funds and not lose the opportunities. And with that, I would like to close in Memel. Not only that, I actually taught his children how to swim. Two of the, the two little ones, well, Norman and Annette were, when I was coaching and Ginny and I swam together. So that's very sad news to the family of Dr. Gennaro and to the kids. I remember you. We're very sad for your loss and our heart goes out with you, out, out to you. Our condolences.
And Mayor, before we close, there just, there was some, some discussion tonight on the Art and Wine Festival. And, and there seems to be several lines of communication that are, that are occurring out there. So I will put this on the June 8th council agenda for discussion. So we as a city can have a game plan and be very clear on what we're doing and why we're doing it. Time is of the essence. I have reached out to the, to the long-term vendors that have put on the Art and Wine Festival in the past. And so since it's not agendized tonight, I'll put it on June 8th so we can get clear direction and have a discussion of the council.
Very good. Thank you. Closing city council tonight at 10:41. Thank you, everyone. Be safe out there.